God, He's a wonderful, wonderful Lord. Jesus is our Savior, He's our Redeemer, He's our Friend, He's our Deliverer. I hope you're ready to worship. The Bible says that He's worthy of praise, amen? The Bible says that let everything that has breath praise the Lord. Do you have breath today? I think you do, so I think we're gonna praise Him. And listen, it's no show here today. Are we live, Selena? Are we live?
Yes, yes.
Okay, those of you watching us live, we welcome you. I just trust that you have your worship hat on, that you're ready and engaged in worship and to be a part of this service where you are. If you can get to the meeting physically, there's always rest to come, amen? Come on, we're gonna sing. If you don't know the song, don't worry about it, sing anyway. Let the song of the Lord, let the song of the Lord rise up. Let the joy of our feet rise up. Sing oh, sing oh, 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 let it rise. Sing oh, sing oh, 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 let it rise. Come on church, let your praise go, let your praise go, let your praise go, let your praise go, yeah. Let your praise go, let your praise go, let your praise go. Come on, come on, come on church. Son of a soul, engaged with your God. He's worthy to be praised. He's worthy to be glorified. He's worthy to be magnified. He's worthy to be lifted up. Oh, yes, Lord. Oh, yes, Lord. I give you all my praise, Lord. Oh, say oh, 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 let it rise. I'll say oh, 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 let it rise. Oh, church, oh, oh, let it rise. Say oh, oh. Let your praise go, let your praise go, Lord. Let it come from the inside, yeah. Oh, Lord, I worship. I give you all my heart. You are the great I am. Oh, there's nothing like you. There is none greater than you. There is none more powerful. Only you are worthy, Father. Only you are worthy, Father. Oh, let's take heed of the name of the Lord our might, for all that is to come. Forever lasting, everlasting, our God. Forever lasting, everlasting, our King. For eternity to reign. For eternity to reign. Forevermore. Oh, let's say, church, give us the rest, give us the best, give us the best of you. Lord, give us the best of us. Lord, give God the best of us. Give us the best, give us your praise, turn your heart towards him. Oh, yeah, 'cause it's more than a song. Well, if it wasn't music songs, would you still have a prayer? We've read a lot of three-star, these words, these prayers are the music, what is music? It should just accompany the real deal. It's not the real deal, but it's accompanying the real deal. He wants the praise that comes from your lips. He wants the praise that comes from your heart. He doesn't want a superstar worship leader. You think God wants a superstar worship leader? He's not interested, there's only one star. It's the God of God and the Lord of lords. Let everything that has breath, they pray. He is the Lord. I'm still very excited, man. As I started, such excitement came on the inside of me. Such an invitation came on the inside of me. I know that God is gonna do great things to my people. Hallelujah. Glory to the Lamb of God, hallelujah. Some of these songs that are coming now, you may not be so familiar with them, but they are great songs to the presence of God. It's very simple. You'll get your verse in time. He is glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Manifest your kingdom here. Oh, glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Manifest your kingdom here. You sing. Glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Manifest your kingdom here. Sing glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Manifest your kingdom here. Reveal your glory, Lord. Reveal your glory, Lord. Reveal your glory, Lord. Manifest your kingdom here. Manifest your kingdom here. That's simple. Glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Manifest your kingdom here. Sing glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Manifest your kingdom here. Reveal your glory, Lord. Reveal your glory, Lord. Reveal your glory, Lord. Manifest your kingdom here. Manifest your kingdom. Glorious, glorious. Sing glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Manifest your kingdom here. Glorious, glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Manifest your kingdom. Reveal, reveal your glory, Lord. Reveal your glory, Lord. Reveal your glory, Lord. Manifest your kingdom here. Manifest your kingdom. Reveal, reveal your glory, Lord. Reveal your glory, Lord. Reveal your glory, Lord. Manifest your kingdom here. Manifest your kingdom here. Manifest your kingdom here. Manifest your kingdom. Would you like God to visit us today? This song is like a prayer. It reminds that God is glorious, glorious, glorious. And it say, Lord, would you manifest in your kingdom? What is this kingdom? The spiritual, the shine, it's wonderful. It's the glory of God in the place where lives are changed, amen? And the second part says, reveal your glory, Lord. We need the glory of the Lord to come into this place, amen? So listen again, say it a couple more times, glorious God. Oh, glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Manifest your kingdom here. Oh, glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Glorious, glorious God. Manifest your kingdom. Reveal, reveal your glory, Lord. Reveal your glory, Lord. Reveal your glory, Lord. Manifest your kingdom here. Manifest your kingdom. Reveal, reveal your glory, Lord. Reveal your glory, Lord. Reveal your glory, Lord. Manifest your kingdom here. Manifest your kingdom here. Manifest your kingdom here. Manifest your kingdom here. Hallelujah! Here's another one. Lord, let heaven touch her, amen? Oh, Lord, let heaven touch her in Jesus' name. Oh, Lord, let heaven touch her in Jesus' name. Lord, sing, Lord. Let heaven touch her in Jesus' name. Oh, Lord, let heaven touch her in Jesus' name. Oh, my heart is fixed on you, my Lord. My heart is fixed on you, my King. My heart is fixed on you, my Savior. I look to you. I look to you, Lord. I look to you, I look to you. I look to you, Lord. Let your glory fall here, oh, say. Your glory fall here in Jesus' name. Come on. Let your glory fall here in Jesus' name. Sing again, let your glory. Let your glory fall here in Jesus' name. Oh, let your glory fall here in Jesus' name. Oh, my heart is fixed on you, my Lord. My heart is fixed on you, my King. My heart is fixed on you, my Savior. Oh, Lord, I look to you. I look to you, Lord. I look to you. I look to you, Lord. I look to you, I look to you. I look to you, Lord. I look to you, I look to you. I look to you, Lord. My heart is fixed on you, my Lord. My heart is fixed on you, my King. My heart is fixed on you, my Savior. I look to you, I look to you. I look to you, Lord. Oh, I look to you. This is a big invitation. Oh, I look to you, Lord. I look to you, Lord. I look to you. Hallelujah. I look to you, Lord. Oh, Lord, I look to you. Oh, I look to you, Lord. Say it again, I look to you. I look to you. I look to you, Lord. Oh, I look to you. Hallelujah. Oh, I look to you. Hallelujah, say it again. Oh, church, I look to you. So down in the deep, I look to you. I look to you, Lord. Oh, I look to you. I look to you, Lord, my heart. Oh, my heart is fixed on you, my Lord. My heart is fixed on you, my King. My heart is fixed on you, my Savior. Hallelujah. I look to you. I look to you. I look to you. I look to you, Lord. Oh, my God, my God, I look to you. Hallelujah. Oh, church, would you see the Lord? Would you see the Lord? See all the saints and angels. I'll be before the throne. And all the heavens have been crowned before the land of God and She. Lord, see you are worthy of it all. See you are worthy of it all. Oh, from you are all things. You deserve the glory. Lord, see you are worthy of it all. Yeah, you are. See you are worthy of it all. Oh, my God, from you are all things. See you are all things. You deserve the glory. Oh, the saints and angels. All the saints and angels. Round me, oh, the throne. Hallelujah. And all the heavens have been crowned before the land of God and She. Come on, we can praise you better than that. See you are worthy of it all. Our world's generation is saved. See you are worthy of it all. Oh, yeah. From you are all things. See you are all things. You deserve the glory. See you are worthy of it all. See you are worthy of it all. Oh, from you are all things. See you are all things. You deserve the glory. Say it again, you're worthy, you are worthy of it all. You are worthy of it all. I look to you. From you are all things. See you are all things. You deserve the glory. Oh, the saints and angels. Why? 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 Come on, say it. You are worthy of it all. You are worthy of it all. Oh, from you are all things. See you are all things. You deserve the glory. See you are worthy of it all. You are worthy of it all. Oh, from you are all things. See you are all things. You are all things. See you are all things. Oh, you are all things. See you are all things. You deserve the glory. You deserve the glory. You deserve the glory. Oh, the saints and angels. Come on, they come to the altar. Your glory is what our hearts long for. To be over the top by your presence. Oh, holy, we wish you our welcome to you. Come on, they come to the altar. Your glory is what our hearts long for. To be over the top by your presence. Your presence, Lord. Your presence, Lord. Hallelujah, see your presence, Lord. I have a plea to all my worship. I plead to all my praise. You alone, I love to worship. You alone, I'm worthy of it all. I feel you're all my worship. I feel you're all my praise. You alone, I love to worship. You alone, you are worthy of it all. Praise is in truth, praise is in the Holy Spirit. Praise is in the deep, praise is in truth. Praise is on the inside, praise is in truth. Praise is when the sound's so true. Praise is when the hand's wrapped in truth. Praise is when the land is paved with truth. Praise is on the inside, praise is in truth. Praise is in the high praise, praise is in truth. Praise is in your own strength. Praise is when the juice runs through. Praise is in the Lord. Oh. Everything that happens, praise is in the Lord. 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 Oh, everything that happens, praise is in the Lord. Everything that happens, praise is in the Lord. My heart, 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 Come on, move! Come on, move! Come on, move! You gotta move! Move closer! Come on, move! Move closer! You better move! Move closer! I said, move! Move closer! You move, you move closer! Move! Get up and move! Stand up and move! Move closer! You move, and he'll move! 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 Move closer! Move closer! Say, move! Move! You move! And he'll move! Move, and he'll move! You 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 better move! Get up and move! Stand up and move! Right up and move! Dance off the grave, Lord! Dance off the grave, Lord! Put on the dumming, the howling of praise! Stand there with your hands! Dance before your God! For this comfort, for this love! If you move, then he'll move! You gotta move, then he'll move! If you move, then he'll move! But you move, then he'll move! You gotta move, sir! You gotta move! Move forward! Get closer! Stand up on your feet! And one upon the other! And go to war with your God! And he is waiting for you to move! If you move, then he'll move! If you move, then he'll move! If you move, if you move! When you move, then he'll move!
Amen! Praise the name of Jesus, come on! Always good to hear the church in celebration through the name of Jesus Christ. We need to praise Him ourselves, you know, right? We don't need a guitar to help you get going. Come on, stir it up! Stir it up, please! Hallelujah! I'll be pouring by the name of the Lord. It's a good thing to come together as believers in the Lord. This is the prophetic conference or prophetic special meetings. And you're gonna hear a lot of that here. You're gonna hear a lot of that spoken about. The word is gonna be really fixed on this. There are gonna be... Some of you, you're gonna have some very serious prophetic words on your life. And I always want to remind you this, that the Lord says that His word shall not return void. Okay, and this is always remember, that was spoken through the prophet. The context is of through the prophet. He says, "My word shall not jump back or in a sense return empty of its purpose." And some of you, you're gonna have some very strong prophecies over your life. Some of you, you know, you're gonna hear something that the Lord wants to say over the body of Christ and as a congregational setting. Some, you know, some of you are gonna hear some things you might be a little bit surprised about, but, you know... I'm just an, I'm an open prophet to the Lord. And whatever God wants to say, He says it, that's the end of it. You know, we, we need to hear what the Lord has to say, not what men want to say. We need to hear what God wants to say. And that's the difference in these times in which we're living. We want to accommodate the things of the Holy Spirit, the things of heaven. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done. We say that so flimsy, don't we? But when we have the, the, the move of the Spirit and that we are open and sacrificed to Him, oh my gosh, anything can happen. Thus saith the Lord, I say unto you, that these are the days of the pouring out of my Spirit. These are the days, saith the Lord, in that I am giving, saith the Lord, not only my anointing, but affording of my Spirit, saith the Lord, to those that will be faithful to my name and will be carriers of my glory. Indeed, in these days, saith the Lord, there are many subverters and those that will speak against my name. But I say unto you, saith the Lord, that as I give out of my Spirit and bring to birth, saith the Lord, those ministries in which I call, I say unto you, there shall be a changing of the guard, saith the Lord. There are many, saith the Lord, that have been in positions for a long time. But I say unto you, saith the Lord, some of these I am removing and taking them backwards because I say unto you, saith the Lord, instead of going in my spirit that I in error, saith the Lord, and there is no intention of change. But I say unto you, saith the Lord, such is the importance of this day and of that which I intend to do. Yes, saith the Lord, some of these, saith the Lord, that have been structures for so long, yes, saith the Lord, they shall come down, saith the Lord, and shall be removed. I am now, saith the Lord, building new ministries. I am putting new people into charge of new ministries that will run after me, saith the Lord, and will accommodate all that I desire to do. Even here, saith the Lord, you are seeing such a thing. And I say unto you, that as I pour out my Spirit and do that which I intend to do, behold, thus saith the Lord, you shall see signs and wonders happening in the midst of you in which has not been seen in the church, saith the Lord, for many years. Is it way to you, saith the Lord, or unusual, that you would see signs, saith the Lord, accommodating, saith the Lord, that which I've already spoken in my word? Would it be way to you, saith the Lord, knowing that I am pouring out my Spirit and that you do not see it in other places? Would it seem way to you, saith the Lord, that gifts are given unto men, saith the Lord, in order to glorify my name, saith the Lord, in the body? Is it way to you, saith the Lord, that such a thing can happen in this day? I am pouring out a new, saith the Lord, and deciding to do a new thing. And if it were not so, saith the Lord, I would not tell you. But as it is happening, I am forewarning you of that which is about to come. A severity of the storm of my Spirit is approaching. And in the severity of that storm, I will bring judgment, saith the Lord. But I also bring the birthing and new life. And I say unto you, saith the Lord, such is the seriousness of this day, saith the Lord, that there is a move of my Spirit, saith the Lord, that some people will be scared of. They will not come near it, saith the Lord, because it is holiness. There is a holiness about it, saith the Lord. And it cannot, saith the Lord, accommodate sin or compromise. And I say unto you, saith the Lord, will you be such a people that you will walk from here, knowing that I am pouring out my Spirit, knowing that I am giving gifts unto men, knowing that I am doing the unusual, saith the Lord? Because in these days, saith the Lord, a new thing must need to be done in order to show the world and even my people that indeed that I am Lord, that the glory of my being is ever real and that I am pouring out my Spirit in these days as according to my word. Indeed, saith the Lord, there shall be some that shall speak against you because they do not like you, saith the Lord, coming to such a place. But indeed, I am pouring out my glory. And you have to decide, saith the Lord, what is best for you? Is it the coercion of others? Is it the influence of others? Or is it you, saith the Lord, coming for me? Is it you drinking from the well? Is it you, saith the Lord, working out your own salvation? Which is it to be, saith the Lord? The days are upon you right now. The days upon you where I am pouring out my Spirit in a new way. And I will speak my word. And I will speak it according to Lysamana or according, saith the Lord, to speak a word of judgment. Which one is it, saith the Lord? For as I give my word and speak it today, you have to decide, saith the Lord, in how you choose to walk with me. Will you put away your sins, saith the Lord, and the works of darkness? Or will you learn, saith the Lord, to work with me? Yes, saith the Lord, in holiness and in reverence, which one, saith the Lord? Do you want to walk with me? Do you want to go on in my light and my glory? Do you want to go with me in holiness and to know of an intimacy with myself, saith the Lord? Or are you going to be one of many that can say my name, saith the Lord, but your heart is far from me? Which one are you, saith the Lord? You have to decide and search your own heart. And I say unto you, saith the Lord, that even at this moment, I am looking upon you and I am gazing upon that which is on the inside. And today, saith the Lord, I would have you to choose your way. I would have you, saith the Lord, to work it out, saith the Lord. And I would have you to come to a conclusion that you are going to walk with me, that you are going to enjoy that relationship, that you, saith the Lord, are gonna be a carrier of the glory, that you, saith the Lord, are gonna make a difference wherever you go. You have to choose, saith the Lord. Let it be the right choice today because surely you will know, saith the Lord, as about to leave this building. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Thank you, Lord, for your word. Oh, thank you, Lord, for your word. I think for the moment, we just need to contemplate and just ponder upon what the Lord has just said. And He's not saying it to a couple of us, He's saying it to this whole room. He's saying it to this whole room that each one of us look at ourselves. We look in our own hearts and we make a choice today that we really are gonna turn away from whatever is going on in your life, that you really are. You know, it's about rending the heart friends and not the outer garment. And I think God is sick to His black teeth of people and the religious rending their outer garments to look good and all and to give a show. But inwardly, you know, they're just full of darkness. God's not daft. He is not daft. It's time we really put a line in the sand and consider our ways. Father, we thank you that, Lord, that you're speaking to us. Lord, we haven't come to a meeting just to be edified and just help us, Lord, to feel that our ears are being glossed with some kind of oil. But we've come here to hear the word. And we've come here to hear what you have to say. Thus saith the Lord, we've come to hear what you want to declare to us, Lord, from the realm of the heaven. We've come here, Lord God, to listen and to receive. And I pray that from today, that, Lord, that people's lives will be changed, that right now, Lord, even right now, that lives are starting to alter, that lives are starting to turn, that as your word is given and does not return void, but even taps and approaches our heart with the seriousness of how you have spoken it. I pray that today, that in the fear of God, in the holy and the reverent fear of God, that that word, Lord, will shake us up on the inside and that from just that very one word, that we will be altered forever. Lord, we just started this meeting. Let it continue in the way in which it is meant to go. Let there be a dynamic outpouring of the glory. Let the prophetic word be spoken. Oh, Lord, let it come forth like a river full of the oil. Let it, Lord, so speak to people's lives in Jesus' name. Are you glad you came to RML Church today? Are you glad you came to RML Church today? Nice to see everyone. I'd just like to remind everyone, make sure your phone is turned off, please. All on silent. I think it's important that I remind all of us... And you know, usually the one that fails the most of this is me that actually says it. If my phone, I'll go, "Bring, bring", and then I look stand here with a red face. But I have made sure my phone's on silent, I think I have, you know? But I'm sure I have. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. I'd just like to mention also as well, that we are gonna take an offering later, we always do. And please, whatever you are deciding to put in the offering, do it from your heart, okay? If you're here today and you don't wanna give into the offering, don't give into it. If you feel that you're compelled because someone next to you is putting something in, don't put nothing in it. You're not gonna get nothing back for it. God's not gonna bless you for it. And Paul the Apostle tells us that we ought to give with a cheerful heart, that we'd give it with the right motive and with the right attitude. So that's just gonna be done just a little bit later. So I would like you to give, but if you don't want to, that's also up to you. All right, just wanted to mention that. We are gonna have Nero come forward in just a moment. I want Nero to come forward. She's gonna bring some prayers with us and we're gonna pray just for, just for a time. But there's something also the Lord wants to say to someone, Shirley. You're looking at me with big surprised eyes, that can you come to the front, please? I'm gonna pray for you, John. I'm gonna pray for you for a minute. This is Shirley, she's turned, she's turned away. Cher, sorry, sorry, otherwise her. She's turned away, this lady, and I know that she's wanted to come here numerous times before. But she's made a great effort today. But the Lord's gonna say something to her. And it's not about you've made a great effort. I'm just saying that so that people can acknowledge that. But I, the Lord's gonna say something, and I can actually see it. I can see what the Lord's gonna say. There's something I can see and the Lord's gonna speak based upon what I can see. All right, so it's all good, don't worry. It's all good, praise the name of Jesus. All right, my hand on you? Lord, we praise you for this dear and sweet lady. This lady, Lord, that is so hungry to be used by yourself and has such a heart and a love for you. Lord, this woman's love for you and example to other people. Lord, it's something that we need today in today's generation. Lord, we pray right now. I thank you for the anointing here right now. I thank you, Lord, for that anointing. Receive it right now, my friend, receive it. There's an, an, an anointing here, a strong anointing. Indeed, as I have spoken to you in times past, saith the Lord, again I speak to you and I remind you of what I am about to do. I am pouring out my Spirit, saith the Lord. And I have decided from years ago that I would do this thing at a certain time. And in this time and generation, there is a move of my Spirit, saith the Lord, that is taking place. It is a strong move. It is something different, saith the Lord. It is not something that people look for, but it is something I would have my people open for to receive in obedience to myself. And I say unto you, that even as my servant prays for you, that there is an importation, saith the Lord, and a new anointing come on you. And I will send you. I will send you. You will be sent and you will go to the place that I send you. And when you go, saith the Lord, you will know indeed that not only you go with my blessing and direction, saith the Lord, but there shall be a true anointing upon you. And as you pray, saith the Lord, other people will be appreciative of you praying for them because they themselves will feel that anointing. They will experience something, saith the Lord, that comes from you. But, saith the Lord, it will not be you. It will be my Spirit, it will be my anointing. It will be that which I am doing through you. Indeed, even now, you are receiving it, saith the Lord. And something is coming upon you, saith the Lord, that is of my kingdom. Indeed, saith the Lord, I have spoken a couple of times to you and I have said to you about an outpouring, about a new thing coming your way, saith the Lord. And even now, it has come. It has come, saith the Lord. And I say unto you, that when you leave here, you are going to be different. That when you leave here, saith the Lord, that you are going to be ministered to in the name of the Lord Jesus. Right now, saith the Lord, I say unto you, right... Right now, saith the Lord, I say unto you, right now, that the work I am about to do with you is going to be glorious. The work that I am about to do with you is going to be glorious. And that which I am about to do with you, it will glorify my name. My name shall be glorified through it, saith the Lord. It will not be you, and it will not speak about you, they will speak about me, saith the Lord, they will speak about what I'm doing through you, they will speak about what is taking place according to my word. And I say unto you, saith the Lord, this is what you've been looking for, this is what you've been looking for, saith the Lord, this is it, saith the Lord. And I say unto you, that you have it even now, as you have, saith the Lord, these late hands upon you, you have it, because as an impartation has come, saith the Lord, in that impartation, that there is a glory. And I say unto you, a gift of my spirit has also been deposited within you, another gift, saith the Lord, has also come, saith the Lord. And I say unto you, as you go from this place, saith the Lord, you are gonna be a changed person, get ready for what I am about to do. Get ready, saith the Lord, and be ready to come. Get ready, saith the Lord, for the things I will speak to you, and listen to what I say to you by my spirit, because some of it, saith the Lord, will be prophetic, and you will have a pen and paper next to you, and you will write things down, saith the Lord, you have seen in your sleep. Get ready, saith the Lord, for indeed it is breaking forth, and you have been able to receive it.
Hallelujah, thank you, Lord.
Blessed are you. Blessed are you. I am gonna say this one more time, and I'm not gonna say it again, okay? Telephone's off, because that interrupted the Holy Spirit, that interrupted me, all right? Telephone's off, and if telephones can't be turned off, the one whose telephone is on, you're gonna have to leave the meeting, okay? So I'm just gonna say that one more time. I know people are walking in after I might have said it, but there's notices on the door, all right, so whoever it is, I don't wanna hear telephones again, okay? So please, please, please listen to what I'm saying. All right? You had what you wanted, and the Lord was showing to me, as I was standing there just a bit earlier, that something is coming towards you, that something was coming towards you. I could see as I was standing there, and I thought, Lord, you've got a word for that lady, because usually when I see something, immediately I know there's a word on it, right? So to God be the glory, I look forward to the testimony, amen? And me this lady, you know, we know each other quite well, and she comes on Facebook Live with me quite a lot, and as I do Facebook Lives and ministry videos, and she's had a few prophecies, you know, through me, over those ministry videos, and yeah, so hallelujah. Nurul, where's Nurul? Can you please come with the prayers for today? Thank you. God bless him. Here we go.
God bless everyone here. It's not wrong?
Oh, yes, I just put one here.
No? Hi. Oh, welcome, everybody. Welcome. God bless you all. Thank God you're here.
Yes.
Thank God you're here. So we have four prayer points, and the first one is to adore our God Almighty. The only thing I can say for this prayer point is, don't think of anything else apart from Jesus.
Hallelujah.
Think that tomorrow or the next hour is not guaranteed.
That's right.
How are you going to adore him with your mouth? That is it. So give it your all. Adore him how you want. If you want to jump, jump. Matthew 6:9. After this manner therefore pray ye our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Can we stand up and hallow our God?
Hallelujah.
Father, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Father God, you're the King of kings, you are Almighty God, you are Alpha and Omega. Father God, we praise you holy name. Heavenly Father, we welcome you here in this place. Father, you are our love, you are the love and self of us. The land of words that I can get to describe what you are, all I can say is you are my love, you are my love, Father God. Father God, you are so worthy. Father God, you are mighty, you are Almighty, you are holy. Holy are you, Lord, holy are you, King of kings, the almighty God, magnificent God, fierce, and yet so merciful, Father God. You are so merciful, you are full of love, you are the creator of the universe, you are the creator of the heavens, you are the creator of the earth, and what is below the earth, there's nothing that has been created that was not created by you. You were there before creation itself. You are God Almighty, you see all at the same time, you hear all at the same time, you have created each and every one of us. You know how many hairs we have on our heads, how mighty are you, God, how magnificent are you, God, so powerful, God, Almighty God, we worship you, we worship you, Father, we have received, Father, you are God Almighty, you are the God Almighty, there is none other than you, you are the Lord of us, King of kings, Father, search our hearts and see what we feel, what we think, what we know of you, Almighty God, we praise you. Hallelujah, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, hallelujah, amen. Praise him, hallelujah. The second prayer point, we have prayed for God to pour his spirit in this place, Jeremiah 2:28, and it shall come to pass afterward, that I will pour out my spirit upon all flesh, and your sons and your daughters shall prophesy, your old men shall dream dreams, your young men shall see visions, it's called word, amen? Father, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, Father God, pour your spirit out unto your people. Father God, we pray for your glory to be in this place, let your spirit open in this place, Father God. Heavenly Father, your spirit in this place, Father God, pour your spirit out unto us, Father God. We are open, Father God, we are open to receive, Father God. May we receive the pouring of your spirit, Father God, and may people see visions, may people prophesy, may the old men dream dreams, Father God, according to your word, Father God. We pray, we ask, we receive, we believe your word, Father God, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, Father God. Let your spirit be poured out to your people in this place, Father God, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Hallelujah, amen. Jeremiah 14:15 to 16. Therefore, thus says the Lord, concerning the prophets that prophesy in my name, and I send them not. Yet they say, salt and famine shall not be in this land, by salt and famine shall those prophets be consumed, and the people to whom they prophesy shall be cast out in the streets of Jerusalem, because of the famine and the salt, and they shall have none to bury them, them, their wives, nor their sons, nor their daughters, for I will pour their wickedness upon them. Pray for discernment of false spirits, so you may steer away from them. We have heard what the Lord has said, his word is alive today as it was then. Therefore, please pray as you can for discernment of spirits and steer away, Father, in the mighty name of Jesus. Heavenly Father, we pray for discernment, Father God. Father God, let us use your armor to make spores, Father God. Heavenly Father, let us know how to test the spirits and steer away, Father God. Heavenly Father, we pray, Father, that we are so in tune and yielding to your spirit, your Holy Spirit, that we can have discernment, Father God, of the false spirits, the wolves in the camp, Father God. Heavenly Father, we pray for discernment. Father God, we pray for us to pray. Heavenly Father, help us, we pray, Father God. We are the ones who hear from the true prophets, Father God. Let our ears yield to the true prophets, Father God, in Jesus' mighty name, Father God. Thank you, Father. Amen. Amen. Pray for God to use his prophets. Matthew 21:22. And all things whatsoever you shall ask in prayer, believing you receive. Believe you will receive what you pray for. May God Almighty use his prophets in this place and in this nation. Father, we have prayed for your prophets, Father God. Heavenly Father, use them, we say use them, Father God. Use your prophets, Father God. Father God, use your prophets, for you say, nothing will be done unless it has been prophesied. Heavenly Father, that is what your word says. Therefore, Father God, we pray, that your prophets are many, Father God. May they remain true to you, Father God. Strengthen their love, so you can use them. Help them to walk righteousness, Father God, so you can use them, Heavenly Father, for you are righteous and you're holy. Keep them holy, Father God, and use them in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, Heavenly Father. We pray for the prophets, Father, strengthen them, strengthen your prophets, Father God. Father God, sharpen their spiritual ears and spiritual eyes, Father God. Father, soften their hearts. May they yield their spirit to your Holy Spirit, Father God. May the Holy Spirit move in them, mighty thee, Father God, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Father, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, church. God bless you.
Amen, church? Amen? I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna ask you to go and shake the hand of three people. If you're worried about germs and there is antiseptic on the wall, because some people still are a bit sensitive about that, but if you don't wanna shake hands, at least greet them without shaking hands, and not just the one people that you know, at least one person that you don't know. All right, we're gonna do it real quick. Go ahead, don't be shy, you can leave your seat. Amen. 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 Praise the name of Jesus. Hallelujah to the Lamb of God. Hallelujah to the living word. Hallelujah to the great Aya. Hallelujah to the Prince of Peace. Is he worthy? He's worthy. Can we do a couple of worship, and then shortly we're gonna go into the offering shortly, but I just wanna do some worship, so I'm switching roles here in a moment. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, church? Glory to the Lamb, amen? Amen. All right. When we were singing and doing worship earlier, I went into some prophetic worship, and there was a, I would call it even some warfare. And it was about getting up and moving. It's amazing how, you know, have you ever seen a child, when they sit down and they're crying about something, and you say, what do you want, and they're not explaining themselves properly, and it's something that they could quite easily do? But instead of doing it, they're doing something else whilst looking at you and telling you what they need. Have you ever seen that? Some of us are doing that with the Lord. The Bible says, draw near to him, and he will draw near to you. We can't say, Lord, I wanna feel you closer. Lord, I wanna be nearer to you. Lord, I wanna be deeper in you. But we make no effort whatsoever to come here to the Lord, we do no spiritual anything, we just speak, and we're waiting for God to do all the work. You need to draw near to him. Draw near, draw near to him. The Lord calls you. The Lord calls you. You gotta draw near, you gotta draw near to him. And he will draw near to you. If you say, I want you close. And you say, I need you near. But you do not do. I want you. You just stay right where you are. Cause you gotta draw near, draw near to God. You've got to rise and go for him. And if you move, then he will move. If you move, then he will move. And you will see the intimacy is real. You gotta draw near to God. Then he will draw near to you. Oh, he'll be closer. Yes, then he will be closer. You'll notice he's closer. You will know when he's closer. When you draw closer, and he draws closer. Everything will change. Everything will change. Everything will change. Everything will change. Oh, it will change. Everything will change. Oh. Will he be you and your kingdom? Did you know that words are not enough? A simple word is not enough. You have got to move from your place. You've got to shift another gear. And shown by your actions, you really want him. Shown by your actions, you are really serious. Shown by your fruit, that you are real. You've got to draw near to God. And he will draw near to you. And he will draw near to you. Oh, he'll be closer. So much closer. The Lord, he will be closer. So much closer. Oh, he'll be closer. So much closer. Can you hear what the spirit of the Lord is saying through my ear? You've got to move from where you are. You've got to move from where you are. Don't sit and cry and moan when he has given you the answer. Oh, church, you've got to move. You've got to move. You've got to move. You have got to move. Oh, from your place, move. Move. Our hunger is... Our hunger is full, Father. The Lord is speaking in his office today. He's saying, "If you are any ghost, get up, get up, get up. On the other side. And move a little closer. He sees your power. He has nothing to blame. He says, "Draw near to me, and I will draw near to you. Oh, upon me, and I will answer you." Oh, move, church, move, church, move. Move, church, move. Too many sitting down. Too many trouble. Too many lying down. Too many dust clothes. Too many ashes. Get up, get up, get up. Get up, get up, get up. Stop blaming others. Stop blaming circumstances. Stop blaming God. You get up, get up, get up. 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 On the inside. Get up, stand up. Stand up. Stand up. Let's not get close. Come on, now, move a little closer. Move closer. Move closer. The Lord is waiting for you to make that move. 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 I'm pushing you. Move. 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 Get up, get up, get up, get up. Get up, get up, get up. You've been sitting down too long. You've been blaming too long. You've been moaning too long. It's time to move. It's time to move. It's time to move. Oh. He says, "If you draw near to me, then I'll draw near to you." See, that's the answer. That's the answer. That is the answer. That is the answer. Give me to say, "Lord, why is... Why I don't move it? Why I go backwards? Why I stop it? Why don't I work it?" He says, "If you draw near to me, then I'll draw near to you." It's in the movement. It's in the movement. It's in the movement. It's in the movement. You've got to move. You, you, you move. You, you move. You get up and move. You move. You get up and move. You move. You get up and move. Oh, move. Get up and move. Move. Get up and move. Move. Get up and move closer. 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 If you move, then you move. 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 If you move. 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 Nice, who are you?
Amen. 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 Amen, you need to move. And it's, you know, it's move, move in the prayer. Move near to him in the sacred place. Hallelujah. Spend time in his Word. Learn from his Word. But learn correctly. All this nonsense going around the churches today. Learn correctly from his Word. Be built up in the name of Jesus. I love the worship, amen. A beautiful anointing upon Pastor Chuan's very gifted lady. And, you know, the Lord has spoken so many times about this particular gifting, the songs of revival, the flow of revival through the worship. We are experiencing it. We are hearing it for ourselves. And you're listening to this right now. Let's have another one, Pastor John. Come on. I've enjoyed it too much. How's the Lord?
That was prophetic.
Yeah, exactly. I was enjoying that, amen. Amen.
I was talking faith in the wrong, you know. Without faith in the wrong, we can't get nothing done.
I never think of it so well.
Do you know this one? It's still moving. It's still moving. Just how great he is. How great he is. It's still moving. It's still moving. Just how great he is. How great he is. It's still moving. It's still moving. It's still moving. Just how great he is. How great he is. It's still. It's still moving. It's still moving. Just how great he is. How great he is. Oh. Is there anything too hard for the Lord? Is there anything too hard for the Lord? Is there anything too hard for the Lord? Say, "No. No. No. No." Is there anything too hard for the Lord? Is there anything too hard for the Lord? Is there anything too hard for the Lord? No. 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 It's still moving. It's still moving. It's still moving. Just how great he is. How great he is. It's still moving. It's still moving. Just how great he is. How great he is. Oh. Is there anything too hard for the Lord? Is there anything too hard for the Lord? Is there anything too hard for the Lord? No. 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 It's still moving. Is there anything too hard for the Lord? Is there anything too hard for the Lord? Is there anything too hard for the Lord? Say, "No. No. No." Oh, it's so moving. It's still moving. It's still moving. Just how great he is. How great he is. It's still moving. It's still moving. Just how great he is. 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 How great he is.
Amen. 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 Hallelujah. You know, we give thanks to Pastor Chuan and the guests. Come on, let's give our thanks. I think that was rightly due. Thank you, Lord Jesus. Hallelujah, thank you. Let's take our seats just for a minute. Okay, you don't have to stand the entire service. You can if you... No, you can if you want to, but I'm just saying for a minute, you can take your seats. We've got all these silly saints who can take your seats. Look, where can you take your seat? Our mother just said, "You can sit down for the moment." We come out with all these kind of silly saints, "Oh, yeah, me, it's ridiculous." Hallelujah. John, you're more sitting down than I am. No, we ministers, we don't sit down. We have our feet most of the time. Can I pray with you just for a minute? Doesn't she look elegant? Come on. Was it a year ago you were here? Remember you...
Yes, a year, a year, a year. Not quite a year.
Okay, I remember you came to one of our meetings and you sat over there. Right, so I've got that right so far. And the Lord gave me a word for you. The Lord gave me a word. And as I came over to pray with you, there was a violent outburst of the demonic. Do you remember? Well, the Lord showed me, right, that... The Lord's got a word here, but the Lord's also showing me, right, that on that occasion, a spirit left. Actually left, right? I'm gonna sit. I've had it for a while then, and I just had to go and use the toilet very quickly. And I was still there, I was still thinking about it, and I thought, "Well, I'm gonna have to step on it, that's not to, you know, reveal it." But I can even say it right now, that was such was the anointing and the prophetic word at that moment. It might as spirit absolutely was kicked out as fast as it came, as fast as it went. But there's more. You're not by yourself, and you know that. Alright, I wanna just pray with you for the minute, right? The Lord's shown me something, but I know there's more, alright? But we're not here to do full-on deliverance today because there's other things to do. But if we're confronted with something and if it can be done very quickly, we're fair enough. But we're not here today to do full-on deliverance. This is a prophetic conference. Father, I thank you for this lady, and Lord, we truly appreciate her. We really do, Lord. We appreciate her. And we appreciate all our brothers and sisters, whoever they are. We give God thanks for them. But we know, Lord, that each member of the body has different needs. And Lord, with some people, the need is more emotional. Some people, the need is more spiritual. Some people, it's financial, it's circumstances. And then with others, Lord, it's a whole mixture of all of it together. Lord, we thank you that in this lady's life that you are moving by the spirit and that, Lord, what you intend to do, you are doing it. You are drawing her to this ministry for a reason. And Lord, we thank you that even now, Lord, that the glory, the manifest glory of the Lord right now is here to minister to our condition.
Hallelujah to the Lamb.
I say unto you, saith the Lord, my daughter, "In the difficulties that you have faced," and there have been many, saith the Lord, "on that occasion, as I brought my word before you..." Yeah, that at that very moment, a spirit left, saith the Lord. But there was a violent, saith the Lord, demonstration of the darkness. There was a violent demonstration, saith the Lord, of that which had come. And some of that violent demonstration was because such was the glory of my presence that a spirit had no choice but to leave, saith the Lord. For at that moment, there was an instant deliverance at that moment. But I say unto you, "There is more to come, saith the Lord." There is more freedom, saith the Lord, to come to you. And I will bring it to you, saith the Lord. And you will know of a deliverance and a freedom that you've never had. Behold the word of the Lord. I say unto you, my daughter, "Deliverance will come." I say unto you right now that this freedom in my spirit will come. I say unto you right now, my daughter, that the things that need to be done, saith the Lord, that some of it is complex, that some of it has roots, saith the Lord, even from other countries, that there are things, saith the Lord, that need to be addressed and locked up. But I say to you on that occasion that a spirit, saith the Lord, a spirit even from Africa, it went, saith the Lord. There was something with you, saith the Lord, that had come into the family line from many, many years ago and had come down, saith the Lord. And it was violently extracted. As violent as it came in, it was violently extracted. And I say to you, my daughter, "There is more to come." There is witchcraft here, saith the Lord. There is more to come. But I will come and deliver you. I will come and speak to your spirit. I will come and speak to you, saith the Lord. And you will know that as I speak, you'll have more deliverance. That as I bring my word, saith the Lord, that more will come. Because in the prophetic, saith the Lord, there is a work to do. It is not always, saith the Lord, regarding the casting out, but it is the prophetic anointing, saith the Lord, that will move so swiftly and strong with you, saith the Lord, that I will deal with something immediately, saith the Lord, and you will know deliverance at that moment. Behold the word of the Lord to you, my daughter. I encourage you right now and I speak to you. Behold the things that your God says to you, that I will deliver you and that you will know of freedom, saith the Lord. I say, "Keep coming, saith the Lord, and do not be afraid of how the spirits will try and control you." You keep coming, saith the Lord, and push against how you feel. You keep coming, saith the Lord, and know this: The more you come and show your determination and faithfulness to that which I'm about to say to you, the more I will deal with you and meet with you. But you need to come, saith the Lord. Staying away is not the answer. Staying away is not the answer. You need to come where the fire is hot, saith the Lord. And I say unto you, "You will know of the deliverance in which I speak, even now, saith the Lord, as I minister to you, and pouring of my spirit upon you." That there is a stirring right now, saith the Lord. And I say unto you, "You will become free because I determine it, saith the Lord, and speak to you by my word, that these things will come to pass, saith the Lord. And I will bring deliverance to this house. I will bring freedom to you, saith the Lord. And these things which abound you and caused you great misery over many years, saith the Lord, indeed they shall go."
Hallelujah.
O shalom goren den. Do losha shalom gan. Do rey bish shalom goren. O hallelujah, we see. Hallelujah, we see. Yerados goshke devaris. O desh gashke boske. Come out in the name of Jesus. You come out in the name of Jesus. I challenge every demon here. I challenge Jezebel. I challenge witchcraft. You come out in the name of Christ. You come out in the name of Christ. O kamongin shovaen. O kum. Deske bashke. For you to go.
He is the Lord.
Yes, you have. Yes, you get the question. Yeah, you know you have to go, so who are you?
We're gonna leave.
Yeah, who are... Now, you will not go until I tell you.
I could have been to leave.
No, you won't.
We're going to leave.
Who are you? Eh? Come on, eh? Who are you? I demand the answer in Christ. Who are you?
We are going to...
I demand... Shut up. Be quiet. I demand the answer. I demand the answer. Yeah, that's right, me again. Is that Jezebel?
Not you again.
Look at me. Look at me? What's the matter, you can't look?
We're going to leave.
No, you're not.
We have to leave.
Yeah, you're going to do it when I tell you.
Yes, we have to...
Yeah, God is in the midst of this. So what's your name? What's... No, I'm not listening to you. No, I'm not listening to you. You be quiet in the name of Christ. Hold your peace. Hold your peace. Hold your... Hold your peace. Right now, I command you, hold your peace. Be quiet. Be quiet. Be quiet. Be quiet. Be quiet. Not be quiet. You have like got the last say here, right?
We don't have a choice, we have to go.
Well, I tell you what. I thought... No, I tell you what. No, listen, no, stop for a minute. Stop for just for a minute, stop.
Go to her bedroom. Go to her bedroom.
Who are you?
But she prays.
No, who are you?
Oh, she's written us down.
Who are you? Come on, eh?
She's written us down.
Look, you've got enough to brag about. Why don't you...
He doesn't... He will give up on her as a friend.
I anoint you with oil in the name of Jesus. Come on, the Holy Ghost on you right now. Oh, the Holy Ghost on you in the name of Jesus.
Witchcraft, yes, yes.
It's just the question.
She, 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 she...
Yeah, exactly as the Lord has told you.
She has been calling us down.
Exactly as the Lord has told you.
We have to go, she wants to pray, we have to go, we can't stay! Let's go! You know what?
I tell you what.
She will stop. He tells her, go pray for us. Now she's in the bed, no, she goes. She goes and she prays. Awesome, pray for witchcraft. And she fast and prays. Yeah, yes, yes. We sit on her. We sit on her in her sleep. She cries out for Jesus. She cries out, she loves to sleep. She prays around the clock, around the clock, around the clock. We have to go, we have to go! This is important, eh? She prays around the clock, she's in the ground. Yes, she tells people that it's in her DNA and it is. She prays too much, we have to go, we can't stay. Okay, okay, you don't know this, but we went to the hospital with her this week.
Stop.
We went to the hospital with her this week, we got into the session in town, so we couldn't get in.
Stop, stop.
We couldn't get in. She prays. Justin, you don't know how much she prays and how it disturbs us.
Be quiet, be quiet. All right, okay, for the moment.
It disturbs us and it disturbs us and we have to go.
Okay, for the moment.
Oh!
Just be quiet, for the moment. Just for the moment, be quiet.
You again.
Yeah, that's right, be again. Quiet, just for the moment. Just for the moment, be quiet. For the moment. For the moment, be quiet. Be quiet. How many generations you've been there, witchcraft? How many? All right, then, you want to go, let's deal with it properly. How many generations you've been there? Just you, I'm talking to just you, how many you've been there? What's the matter, you've got no answer now, do you? How long you been there? Okay, sixteen, so what's your legal right? What's the legal right? You want to go, do you? But let's do it properly. That's what you said, you want to go. Right, yeah, the glory is too much for you, right?
I can't stay, she prays and...
Right, so what's your legal right then, witchcraft? What's the legal right? What's the legal right? What's the... What's the legal right? What's the legal right? What is it? What is it? That's the legal right? That's a lie, isn't it? Isn't it, witchcraft? Come on, look at me. Come on, let's do it toe-to-toe then. Come on, come on, let's do it. Look at me. Come on, let's do it toe-to-toe. What's the matter, you can't open your eyes? I thought you were stronger than that. I thought you were stronger than that, witchcraft. You are a bit of a weakling, aren't you? You're a bit of a weakling, aren't you? What's the legal right? What's the legal right?
She's strong.
Witchcraft, what's the legal right?
Oh, he doesn't have to go, we're going to go!
What's the legal right?
She is so strong for us anyway! Don't you understand? We can't do this, we can't touch her anymore, we can't...
Be quiet!
We cannot touch her anymore! Don't you understand? We want to go because let me tell you...
Listen, be quiet.
She is always praying!
Be quiet! In the name of Christ, you will obey. In the name of Christ. You will be quiet, you know? Hold your peace. Hold your peace. You will obey the name of Christ. Hold it! Hold your peace, spirit. No, hold it! You will listen, you are not in charge here. You will be quiet. You will shut your mouth and you will obey the authority of Christ. You will listen and understand who is an authority here. You are not an authority. You have not got the floor to open your mouth the way you have. You have not got the floor. No, you stop it right now! Stop it! Stop it! Stop it! Stop it! No, look at me right now. What's your legal right? Spirit, what's the legal right?
I don't know.
Yes, you do. What's the legal right? Answer me by Christ. I demand the answer. What's the legal right? I demand the answer. What's the legal right, witchcraft? What's the legal right? What's the legal right? What is it? Come on. Spirit, I'm going to have to tie you with this.
Family, family, oh!
Okay, Father, so what is it? What's the law? Hey, witchcraft? You want to do business? You want to go toe-to-toe, so what's the legal right?
She boasts, right?
What's the legal right?
She boasts about...
Be quiet! Be quiet! Be quiet! Be quiet! Shut up, be quiet! Hold your peace! Hold your peace! Hold your peace!
No, no, it's not what we do again, though.
I'm sorry, it's called me again.
Yeah!
Me again. Prophet Lawrence. Prophet Lawrence.
You're rash.
Prophet Lawrence. What's the matter?
We hate you because you're like a rash. You just break over everyone.
Right, witchcraft?
We don't like you!
Witchcraft, listen.
We're going!
Can you turn the video off, please? Turn the mic off, turn them off.
We're going, we're going to go.
We'll come back with them.
We're going to go!
We'll come back with them. But the Lord told her he was going to deliver her. And again, here comes the prophetic word. You saw it for yourself. We're in a place where the Lord's moving powerfully. But we also have to remember as well that deliverance and the casting out of devils, right, is a very, very real subject and it needs to be addressed. And myself, I've done a lot of training in this area, I've done a lot of ministry in this area, right, and we're seeing evidence of it. Pastor John is trained in this as well. We've done it, proper training with a proper Bible school, all on deliverance and exorcism. And we've been doing it for two years now, right? Constantly, a lot of ministry, private ministry, ministry in the church, and we're seeing a dramatic change in people's lives. That is right in your face. You can't deny it. We see it for ourselves, right, that the signs and the wonders and the miracles that God needs to do it also needs to happen in the body of Christ so that you can see it for yourself. We need to see change. We need to see change in the church.
Amen!
We need to see the power of God in operation in the church. All right? And we need to see people set free and miraculously touched by the Lord in order for there to be a testimony and to speak to that world out there and tell them that the very things that are written in scripture are evident for today.
Yes, amen!
We need to see it. But the church needs to see that. The church needs to see this in front of everyone, right? And not only is it heartwarming, it's heart-touching. But you know, it's also the authority of heaven dismantling the authority of darkness. We have to remember that Satan is under our feet. He is under our feet, friends, right? You have the authority of Christ. He is under our feet. Amen, I'd like to see it.
Glory to the Lord!
Hallelujah!
Glory to the Lord! Glory to the Lord! Glory to the Lord! Hallelujah! He is working! He is working! Hallelujah! We should be rejoicing! We should be rejoicing! The demonstration of the power of our God! And putting the devil down, pointing him out in Jesus' name, according to scripture. This is the work of the body of Christ. And we need to rejoice. One who was bound, free. We need to rejoice in our God and have hope that when we meet people with complex situations, that we start to understand that God is able, there is nothing that God cannot do. We, the church, have to come back to our biblical position on a lot of things. Not traditional position, but biblical position. And start to believe God, to deal with things that are complex, to deal with things that are difficult, to deal with things where we didn't know how, but somehow, God does it by only doing it when we, the church, step out and do what he told us to do. We need to be brave, we need to be bold, we need to be willing. Yeah? We need to be brave, we need to be bold, we need to be willing. Willing participants to participate and partner with the Holy Spirit, parochial, comes on the other side to work with you, to do the works of Christ. It's not a storybook, it's a lifestyle. I say it's not a storybook, it's a lifestyle. But we need to start to step out and be willing to confront the devil when he dares to imagine that he is greater than the Lord. That we are the ones that are to speed Christ in the earth, all right? By the time that you're born again and know the word, you are able to do what Jesus told you. If you live in clean, right, you can step out and do what Jesus told you. And we just persevere until you see the breakthrough, amen? All right? Next time anything happens or you see somebody get a breakthrough, I want to see more rejoicing in our God. I want my goodness in Jesus and to make me and make the devil cry because of how much we worship our God, amen? Amen.
Amen to that? Amen to that? How good, yeah, how good you are to that, praise the name of Jesus.
Yeah, sure, sure, sure.
We're going to do the offering in a minute. We're going to run over on time, but I did expect it. All right, we allow the Holy Spirit or the kingdom of God to do as he needs to do. And if you go out of there crawling on your knees drunk and saying, "I've got too much of Jesus," ah, well, I'm going to come right next to you and say, "Oh, no, no." I don't mind you crawling out, but crawl out under the influence of the Holy Ghost. If the caretaker comes here and he sees people on their hands and he's crawling up to that door, he's going to wonder, "What on earth is going on in those people there?" We'll just have to tell him, won't we? We'll just have to tell him! Hallelujah! Well, I love it, you know, I love it. We do a lot of deliverance, right? I love it. And we do quite complex deliverance as well. We really go after some deep stuff. That, the spirit of witchcraft is a nasty spirit. And it's in a lot of people. It's in a lot of people and people don't realise. And it's in people, you've done tarot cards, people have done the Ouija boards, people have played with all manner of meat jams and something that they've eaten or something they've drunk has been cursed by others. I mean, it comes in in all ways. Cultures, backgrounds, witch doctors, false prophets, all kinds of stuff is flowing, many false prophets operating under witchcraft, right? And then they prophesy over you or whatever it is, it's not prophecy, is it? And then because you believe it and you're open to it, right, you just receive what they just gave you. Welcome to the world of false prophets. And it's all over the place. So when I start preaching, you're going to hear me really get off on a few things, okay? But we're going to take up the offering in a minute. And again, I want you to consider what you're doing with your offering. If you're thinking about chucking in some coppers just for the sake of looking like you're giving an offering, I'm going to come and give it to you right back. Right? I don't mind. I don't mind. But it's important, right, that we give in the right way because we want you to be blessed. We want you to be blessed. Given, it shall be given. We can, you know, speak a couple of scriptures and that, right? But we want you to be blessed. Give so that God can bless back, you know, in Jesus' name. So I'll leave that with you. But before we have the offering, and I'll give you a moment to think about what you're doing as well. We have Pastor Fox who's turned up today with his presence. He blessed us with his grace. Amen, Pastor. Your heart, Hallelujah! And I'd like this gentleman to come up and introduce himself for a moment and also to come and encourage the church. Maybe you want to speak on something or maybe on the prophetic or something that we're having an annual prophetic conference, but just come and encourage the church just for a moment. I'm going to give you a moment. There's a microphone here for you, sir, and I give you an opportunity, come and bless the church.
Amen.
Bless you, brother.
Lord, whatever you do within this season, please don't do it without me. Please don't do it without me. Oh, Lord, whatever you do within this season, please don't do it without me. Please don't do it without me. Oh, Lord, whatever you do within this season, please don't do it without me. Oh, please don't do it without... One more time now, hey, Lord, whatever you do within this season, please don't do it without me. Please don't do it without me. I want to give God a prayer. I want to give God a prayer. Come on, hallelujah! Praise the name of the Lord! Thank you, Jesus! Praise the name of the Lord! Hallelujah!
I give honour to God and I want to greet my dear brother, amen, of the Lord's statement and to his dear wife, amen. So glad to see you and all the saints are here today. I wanna say that I'm so privileged to be here, just to be here, just to rejoice and just to hear from the Lord, amen. You know, as pastor, sometimes you're always given, but sometimes you want to receive. Hallelujah. I'm just thankful when I can just sit down and receive with the Lord, amen, somebody ministering to me, amen, hallelujah. And I know this man of God for many years, amen, like I'm to listen to him because he ministers to me, amen, hallelujah. And I thank God, I wanna say that we've been embarking on quite a few months of going out into the highways and the byways, we've been knocking on people's door and I wanna say to you, saints, amen, there are some conditions that I see and come across, amen, as I knock some of the people's door and I say, "Lord, amen, we need a revival." Oh my God, we need a revival. I've talked, we've knocked on the door, we've spoken to some people who are going through some rough situations, amen, and going through some challenges and going through some attacks in their life, in their health, amen, in their finances, amen, in their family, they're going through some attacks and I'm saying, "Lord, just give us the power, amen, amen, to deliver these people and to help to set these people free through the moving of the God's Holy Spirit and Jesus Himself." And I say, saints of God, sometimes we think that we're going through much, but we've experienced the testimonies, amen, of what people are going through. We realise, amen, like a song I love, it says, "Be grateful because there's someone else that's worse off than you. Be grateful because there's someone else that loves to be in your shoes, so be grateful." Amen, sometimes we think we're so grateful so much, amen. I've experienced, amen, I've experienced, amen, situations in my life, I say, "Lord, I'm trusting you, I'm believing in you because when I hear the testimony of some of the saints, amen, of what they've been through, I say, "Oh God," I just look back and I just say, "Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus." I just say, "Thank you, Jesus." And that's why I'm just probably encouraging you all, saints of God, amen, if at a time that we need a revival, we need a revival now, in a time that we need to share the word and share the word of God to people is now. Any opportunity that you get, I'm just coming from an evangelism, a mission training session, amen, our church in Wood Street, amen, and we went out, amen, into the streets talking to people, amen, giving our tracks. And I wanna say, I say, "We need to tell, we proclaim the gospel of Jesus. We need to proclaim the gospel of Jesus, amen, right now in this dying world." A country that once proclaimed Jesus, a country that once, amen, had a church at every corner, now becoming mosques, now becoming synagogues, now becoming places of homes, amen, they're just changing, they've been knocked down and turned into flats, amen, that's the world that we live in, that's the country we live in, a country that wants, amen, praying, amen. Winston Churchill asked the nation to pray, amen. He asked the nation to pray, and pray they did and they won the war. Amen, hallelujah. And now, amen, for all that's going through, I never hear politicians say, "Come on, church, you come on, country, let us pray, amen." Amen, because we're relying on their own self, they rely on their own self instead of God. So I'm gonna encourage you today, amen, just hold on to God's changing. Don't let go, don't let go, amen. There's nothing out there in the world now, people are telling me, "Pastor, I don't even go to parties anymore because, you know, there's no enjoyment." And I said, "Well, you need to know Jesus." I said, "You need to know Jesus. When you know Jesus, it makes a difference." I'm gonna, I promise you. You're getting too excited there, isn't it? Passion's rising up. Thank you, sir. Well, it's good to be here and, you know, we have invited a number of ministers here, et cetera, maybe some will come tomorrow, maybe some won't, but thank you, sir, for coming along and encouraging us with your presence. Hallelujah. Yeah, so, yeah, I'm just listening, praise to Jesus. Hallelujah. Yeah, I think that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna go towards the offering, whatever you're gonna do, my friends, put it in with love in Jesus' name and say, "Thank you, God, for what you're doing in this ministry." So we're gonna turn to the offering, get your offering ready, friends, whatever this is, right? Get it ready, but when you place it in, place it in with love in Jesus' name and say, "Thank God for what God is doing in this ministry." And you can see it for yourself, you can see it for yourself exactly what God's doing in this ministry. If you feel led to solve, solve it. If you don't want to, that's okay, but we rely upon the Lord for the offerings and for the ministry. Praise the name of Jesus. Let's bring our offering, friends, to the front. We're not gonna come round on this occasion, whoever of you are wanting to give an offering, a free will offering, can you please make your way to the front and place it in? Don't all run down together at once, we appreciate that, but come down and place it in and we thank each and every one of you for what you're doing. Thank you, everyone, thank you. Thank you, God bless you, thank you.
I want to say that if you're somebody that I've got asked about giving online, we can give you details of that privately, then you could do a transfer online, or you can also use PayPal, which all speak will be able to deal with when I off the guitar. Amen.
Hallelujah. Praise God. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Oh, Jesus. Oh, Jesus. Oh, Jesus, Christ, Jesus. Oh, Jesus, God, oh my soul, hallelujah. Let us pray. Father, how much we thank you, we glorify your name, we lift you up, Lord. You are altogether lovely, you are the rose of Sharon and the lady of the valley, the bright and morning star. Lord, you're the fairest of ten thousand, my soul. Here is the offering that your people has given. I pray, Lord, that you will bless it in a special way. I pray, Lord, as your word said, open the windows of ever mighty God and pour them out of blessing, oh God, that they might not have room this door. Lord, I pray this afternoon that you sanctify this offering for the keeping of your word in Jesus' name, amen. Amen. Blessed, thank you, pastor. This is Pastor Marshall, so we give praise for Pastor Marshall. Natasha, we have a testimony for today, okay? And I'd like to just explain to you firstly that Natasha is gonna come and share with you in a prophetic word in which I had given a while ago, but also in the fulfillment and the coming to pass of that prophetic word. So I thought that was quite relevant for today. We also gonna trust it, we're gonna have something similar tomorrow, we'll see how it, Natasha, please come forward. So I'm gonna let you explain it for yourself and I'm gonna put no words in you on nothing, I'm just gonna let you explain it, here's the mic.
Hi, everybody. I've been coming to this church for a while. There was one occasion and Apostle Lawrence gave me a word. It was about a job that I didn't have at the time and in about three or four weeks later, I actually got the job and I'm still in that church. And the greatest I really wanna say is just don't give up, just hang in there, everybody. Have faith.
Amen, that's it. That's it. And she's still in that job today, praise the name of Jesus. And it's hard though, it's a better job, better prospects, everything, so, you know, the Lord knows what he's doing. When God speaks by his word and he says what he has to say, there can sometimes be multiple reasons why he says what he says, not just because he says it for the sake of it or like want to make you feel better for that moment. A lot of that's the problem in the church today, a lot of people want to be made feel better at that moment. It's the quick fix scenario, it's the microwave church we live in today, you know, stick it in for 30 seconds and out pops something and that's how the church is today. That's how it is, come on, isn't it? That's how the church is today, we want it immediately, we want a prophecy that suits us. Here comes the ETA syndrome, we want something that suits us and unless you get something that suits you, right, you walk out displeased. And again, another issue going on there, right? Is that then because many false people or it doesn't have to be prophets, it would be just a general person, will speak something into your ear which you might like. And then you go and accuse God then, right, of why it didn't come to pass and it didn't come to pass because God didn't give it in the first place. Isn't that right? Right? You lose hope, you lose faith, you start accusing God as well, right? You've gotta be careful what comes out of your mouth, accusations and filth goes up to heaven, he's used to it, he's used to it. But in this generation and in a few generations now, right, but in this generation, it's very bad because of the false. We won't tolerate it in this hall, we won't tolerate it. I could go, I could say a few harsh things, but I'm gonna, we just don't tolerate it, that's just the end of it. I have a word for you. You've got a nice smile, you're gonna smile after this, I know what God's gonna say to you, right? And I've had it for about 15 minutes, I've just had it there and I thought, all right, let's just give it and then I can get into the word a bit, right? So just focus on him, not me, it's not about me, it's about him. I don't know, I've never met you, have I? Don't know nothing about you, never met you, all right? Lord, we thank you for this lady and we thank you that there is a move of your spirit today in whereby you are doing something different. The anointing speaks for itself, we don't have to brag about it, we don't have to try and make it something different, we don't have to try and convince people about its authority and its authenticity. The anointing speaks for itself. And Lord, in the name of Christ, you have a work for this lady, you have something different, something different right now. And in the name of the Lord Jesus, right now, hallelujah, let's do this first, be filled with the Holy Ghost, let's do that first, let's get this off to the right start, be filled with the anointing, with the Holy Ghost right now, be filled, receive that. Receive it in the name of Christ, there is a very strong anointing here, there's a prophetic anointing here. Indeed, saith the Lord, I will send you and you will go, saith the Lord, with the word that I will give you. And indeed, saith the Lord, based upon the word, saith the Lord, that you speak, people will call you a prophet. People, saith the Lord, will come up to you and they will ask you what is in you and you will be able to say to them that the word of the Lord is in you. You will be able to speak these things to them, saith the Lord, because I determine now that I call you, saith the Lord, I call you into ministry and I birth you, saith the Lord, right now, I birth you right now, saith the Lord, and I call you into ministry. And I say unto you, you will be sent, saith the Lord, and you will be sent by myself and you will be a carrier of my word, you will carry it, saith the Lord, and as you carry it and you go to the places I send you, yeah, release it, saith the Lord, at the right time, release it, saith the Lord, and as you release it, more will come to you. Indeed, as I call my people, it is not to associate yourself with the false, it is not to associate yourself with false teaching, but it is to learn the good and the right way, saith the Lord. And I say unto you, as I call you, and an anointing is coming on your life right now, saith the Lord, it is departing from me and coming to you, and I say unto you, I have already given it, and right now, saith the Lord, my word is in you, it is in you, and the word that is in you, I will send you with that word and you will know where to go, you will know the person to speak to, and I say unto you, saith the Lord, this is the beginning of different things, this is the beginning of something different, this is, saith the Lord, the giving to you, saith the Lord, not because you are better than others, but because of my calling and of my purpose and of that which I intend to do, saith the Lord, yeah, can you serve privilege in that which I am doing, but also be scared of my presence, be an understanding vessel of my anointing and who I am, saith the Lord, and go with the word that I give you to where I send you, and you will know indeed, saith the Lord, that you have been called as the sent one. I will send you, I will direct you, I will give it to you, saith the Lord, but be of a listening heart, of a listening spirit, and you will know indeed, saith the Lord, that the day of the Lord, the word of the Lord, that which I have promised to do, saith the Lord, has come upon you right now.
Thank you, Lord.
Look at me just looking there.
There's a strong anointing here.
Church, whoa! Yeah, right there, man, right there.
Strong anointing, thank you, Lord.
Yeah, there it is. Look at me right now. So who's in opposition then to the word? Yeah, there you are, who's in opposition? Who is it? Who's in opposition? Who's in opposition? Who's in opposition? I want to know your name, who are you? Who are you? I demand your name, who's in opposition? What's the matter, can't speak? Don't want to speak? Got nothing to say? Who are you? Excuse me about another people, I think it's hilarious. I think it's hilarious, amen? There's no peace of God and glum, you know, we're not all sitting here in coffins, this is the church, amen? Let all of us be glory, this is the church, hallelujah. You're going to need more deliverance because what it is, right, it's like opening a can of worms, as they say, and it stirs it up. But you've had some good deliverance there and that's some nasty, they're nasty spirits, right? You've had some good ones, but you're going to need more and I'm gonna let you know that it's a process, it's a process, it's just a process, 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 but you're gonna need more and my advice to you is keep coming back to this church. Are you all right with that? All right, remember, we love you in Jesus' name. All right, so let's get to the word if I can, amen? Amen? Shall we try that, Pastor Fox? Shall we try and get to the word? We might, we might not, I have no idea, we just go with the Lord and see what God wants to do, but I do not, as you can tell, I do not mess around in this area. I don't mess around, there's no mercy for a spirit, not one bit. It comes out and it goes out into dry places, it goes to the pit, it gets out, we cast it out in the name of Christ, there is no mercy whatsoever. The name of Jesus Christ, the authority of heaven is against them completely and Satan has got a lot to answer for. He has and you know, he's going to, he's gonna answer for all of it. But you know, the little foot soldiers and all these little remnants of little demons which are all, which is a massive amount of mankind, including the church. Can a Christian have a demon? Well, I think you're looking at it. I think personally you're looking at it, so you know, the evidence is right in your face. Anyhow, shall we get to the word? Should we try? It's up to you to try a bit, isn't it? Amen? Try a bit, how far we get, I really don't know, let's see, isn't it? All right, so, welcome to RML Prophetic Special Meetings or the Prophetic Conference, this is an annual time, this is annual, just as we are, you can see these, right? We don't have these generally yet on the Sundays, but these, we do have up on these occasions, right? This is the annual time. And you know, the Lord is building, the Lord's already showed me that this is going to build and build and build and, well, I'm looking forward to all that God wants to do. So let's go to the text, I usually try and go through from the authorised King James, that's my preference, there's the authorised King James. So 1 Corinthians 14 verses 29 to 33. Yeah. Pastor John, would you like to read it? I have it here in front of me and there's a wonderful microphone so we can hear your wonderful voice.
Amen. So here we go, reading 1 Corinthians 14 verse 29 to 33, reads thus, "Let the prophets speak two or three and let the other judge. If anything be revealed to another that sitteth by, let the first hold his peace. For ye may all prophesy one by one, that all may learn and that all may be comforted. And the spirits of the prophets are subject to the prophets; for God is not the author of confusion, but of peace, as in all churches of the saints."
Thank you. Just play one more, doesn't she look lovely? Come on, I can't believe you, doesn't she look lovely? All right. So let the prophets speak two or three and let the other judge. If anything be revealed to another that sitteth by, let the first hold his peace. They all may prophesy one by one. Here comes the text, there's our context, big time in the church. That all may learn and all may be comforted. And the spirits of the prophets are subject to the prophets, but God is not the author of confusion, but of peace, as in all of the churches. Heavenly Father, Lord, I bless you and thank you for your word. And I know that through your word, you're gonna speak a lot, you're gonna speak a lot, this is urgent time we live in, urgent, the church is open to listen, but not many, Lord. We need change in the church, we need to stir it up, Lord, we need to kick out the demons and see people released and built up and edified and go on in that which you have for them. Lord, I thank you for the anointing on this word and the things that you need to say at this time. I pray it will be a blessing to each individual and hearer. Let us receive something today from your word, let us receive something that we might go out at least with something. In Jesus' wonderful name, I release this word to your people, I pray a blessing on it and that, Lord, it would even be sharp like a sword and it would cut through the doubt, the negative, the unbelief, Lord God, the bad doctrine that fills many people, that it would cut through all of it and get to the very centre of our being to release us into the place of truth. I bless this word in Jesus' name, amen? So, okay, so when we come to our text, which I've read out, all right? We always have to remember context of what the Lord is saying, who the Lord is saying, to whom, to where, the context, truth or principle, all right? Now, some of you might not have heard that kind of thing, this is something that we teach, we're very strong in this because we want to make sure that the people learn correctly in truth. We don't, I'm not one to hold it, to grab it, blab it, claim it and all this kind of stuff, it's a pile of nonsense. And I will speak openly and what I have to say, it's a pile of nonsense, we have to learn the word correctly in order to be built up correctly. If you're not learning the word of God correctly in context and really what is it saying? Is it saying it to the church? Is it saying it to you? Is something specific to you? Is it not to you? And if it's not to you, why are you trying to claim it? Why are you trying to claim it if it's not to you? You hear something from somewhere else or you hear something from another church and you grab it, you blab it, you claim it, you start saying it over your own life and it's heresy, it's error, it's absolute error, the church is filled with it. The church is filled with it. We like to speak the truth in and be a blessing to you. If you find the word slightly challenging, good. Because we need to unlearn what we've learned and to be taught the truth. And sometimes we have to pick away at the rubbish in us so that we can at least see something that is relevant to us. So, "Let the prophets speak." Paul, in addressing the Corinthian church, he recognizes the importance of the Lord's prophets. Thank God, you know, thank God for Paul the apostle. He's a bit of a wild man, wasn't he, for a while? You know, killing the Christians and dragging them in into prisons and even giving his permission to some of them to be killed. A bit of a wild guy, wasn't he? But you know, when you meet Jesus Christ, everything changes. Bit of a wild man, you know, until that moment, you know, after he actually met him, he was still as wild, a pharisee after pharisee, absolutely strict according to the Lord. Don't mess with him, you'll end up in jail. Don't mess with him and do something, you know, against the, the Lord of all, whatever it is, right? You would have been in trouble with Paul. But as soon as he met Jesus Christ, oh my gosh, grace hit his, grace hit his heart, didn't it? And he had an encounter with Jesus, hallelujah. And he is a changed man. He recognizes the change and he also understands that the church not only is something that to be buried, but he has good insight and understanding from the Lord. And that's what you need. You need good insight and understanding from the Lord. You know, in the olden days, in the Catholic Church and all, they would look to the priests and, and the people at the front. The people couldn't understand Latin, they couldn't understand what they were saying. They didn't read, they didn't write, a lot of them. And they just sat there and they were drip fed, drip fed, drip fed, with all manner of rubbish, right, from the pulpit and they, and that's what the things that they believed. And that's the things they went out into their community. That's the things they told other people. But yeah, a lot of it was a pile of nonsense. A lot of it was a pile of nonsense. And today, there's a lot of nonsense coming from the pulpit. You know, you could say it's the same spirit, it's a pile of nonsense. And well, this is why we need solid men and women of God at the front who are able to teach the church. Let's rise the church up in power and glory. Let's rise the church up. And let's see the church what it is supposed to be. At the moment, the church is very weak. It's a weakling. You know, with the greatest of respect, Islam has got more respect in the world than the Christian church. And yet Islam, the spirit of Islam and Satan and all the rest of it, right, is the fallen spirit. And yet we serve the risen one, right? And why is it the church is mocked and made something today in the world today as if it's nothing, but yet they fear and have a respect to Islam? It's the wrong way round. And I say that respectfully. You don't hear me criticizing and slandering Islam, because I try, I try and be respectful, but the spirit behind it will not be respectful. That is a fallen spirit. And we, if we, if we are worshiping, hallelujah, a risen Christ, why are or are is the church so downcast and defeated as it is in the world today? It's back to front. Guess what? It's changing. Did I hear something? It's changing. It's changing, hallelujah. Thank God for change, amen? And sometimes change is a little uncomfortable. Let's get uncomfortable. The opening text of 1 Corinthians, uh, 14 is an indicator of how serious God takes his prophets. All right, Psalm 105, 15 states, saying, "Touch not mine anointed and do my prophets no harm." God's prophets are important to him. We're all important, but there is a significance for the prophet. A real significance. There's something different about the call of a genuine prophet. And you know, I, and you know, I hear so many people, here comes the first one. I hear so many people saying, "Touch not mine anointed." Do you not know he's speaking the, "Touch not mine anointed, I've heard it." Evangelist going down the road and someone comes up and threatens them, "Touch not mine anointed." Do you know, that's out of context, doesn't refer to it at all. It's referring to the king of Israel at that time. The king of Israel, David, "Touch not mine anointed." It was David. And yet today we go around saying, "Touch not mine anointed." Shut up and put it away from you, because it's out of context. Yes, we have an anointing. Yes, we can use the principle, but the context was about King David. And says, "Do my prophets no harm." And we can take it back to the Old Testament and say, "Do not do the Old Testament prophets no harm." But God is building his church today. And there is a revival and something different is happening today in the body of Christ. And I'm gonna say today, are we listening? Are we listening to what God is saying by his spirit? Or are we going off in our own tangent and believing what we want to believe because we want it to suit ourselves? That is not the church. That is not the church. And Paul the apostle was very strong and he was outspoken and he would have corrected that in the moment of time. And you see many letters or things that Paul has written in rebuking the church, in talking about division, in talking, "Why are you saying this? Why are you doing that? And why is division in the church?" And today, nobody will say nothing. Nobody will say nothing because they don't like the controversy that they're appointed to speak about. And today, we need people who will speak at the pulpit openly on the streets and say what it's about. It's time for change. It's time for change. And God spoke to me Wednesday, actually. God said something quite serious on Wednesday, just on Wednesday. I'm not gonna go too much into it. But you know, I've been outspoken and I've been like this for years. This is not new. I've been like it for years, right? You've got a good smile, I must admit. You're gonna smile more, you know, when you get to grips with the anointing, what God's gonna do with you, you're gonna smile a lot more than that. But you know, we need men and women of God at the pulpit. And you know, if they're not like for the truth, well, don't be like for the truth. It's accountability to God, not the church. The pastors, the prophets and that, they are accountable to God, not the church. Although they are overseers or have oversight at the end of the day, but the real accountability is between them and him. You know, and being swayed by the church in order to control the mouth and the pulpit, that's witchcraft. That is witchcraft. And God will come down hard on that. God's people are important. Do you know, you're, do you know, you're important? Praise the name of Jesus. Our text indicates that the Lord's prophets might all prophesy, but in a set order. He indicates that no more than two or three. And if another prophet is present and has something from the Lord, permission is given for one prophet to keep quiet and allow the other to speak. That's why he says that he's not the author of confusion. There's an order. And it's not an order to control and it's not an order to put down rules and regulations and you can't do this and you can't do that. God has reasons why he said what he says. And at that time, that church was young. It was a young birthed church. And there was chaos going on. And obviously, Paul is writing, because Paul writes a letter based upon the reports of what he's heard from the church. He's not saying this just for the sake of saying, he's saying, right? Something has come back to him regarding order in the church and what's happening. And now in a sense, he's putting his foot down. He's putting his foot down. He's in the Lord. The Holy Ghost is there. He knows what to write. Many times, I know what to write, I'm just led of the Lord to write what I'm writing. It's a similar kind of thing. Paul is writing to the church and he said, "Well, here it is. This is what I've gotta say and I'm led by the spirit to say it." And he's telling this church, this young church, this church that's been birthed and might not even know its way. They haven't found their feet. They're a young church. And he's saying to them, "Look, come on, come on, you know, let's have a bit of order." All of these people trying to prophesy and, and half of them might not even know what they're on about. They might be falsely saying, "Let's see the genuine prophets take their position. Let's see the genuine prophets sit together maybe even and be in a place of unity between them, that they all know the counsel and what the Holy Spirit is speaking at that time." They're in unity in the spirit, the glory, the power, the, the, the anointing on the prophets. They're all there in unity. And I tell you one thing, the Lord will point out disunity very quickly amongst the prophets. The prophets have to sit in the church, right, and be solid structures in order to share the word that the word needs to come forth at that time. And if the prophets are just gonna sit there and argue amongst themselves and say, "Well, I got this word, you need to shut up, let me speak," and start bickering amongst themselves, right? The Lord's not going to move. That's why we have to have mature people up the front. Not a novice. Being lifted up with pride. He spoke that to Timothy in, in Timothy. And he said, you know, in a sense, the people at the pulpit and this and that, don't let just a young pastor with no experience, doesn't really know, they haven't grown, they haven't dealt with their pride and this and that. Don't give them the position and the room to stand at that pulpit and grow in the church. Because we need mature people. It doesn't mean you need an old man or an old woman standing there. You need someone who has grown in Jesus. They have some solid structure on the inside of them. They know the word, they know their Savior. And they've also repented in the name of Jesus. They have properly repented. And there's a lot of people on the front today, you know, they're sleeping one with another and taking their pick from their congregations. Ah, God's gonna deal with that lot. Yeah, exactly. God's gonna deal with that lot, praise the name of Jesus. So he's restricting the prophets. And the text about the gift of tongues is similar to the prophets. He says in 1 Corinthians 14, 27, "If any man speak in a unknown tongue, let it be by two or at the most by three." What did he just say about the prophet? Let's go back to that, all right? "Let the prophet speak two or three." All right, so that's 1 Corinthians 14, 29. And then we go further, we just go back slightly. All right, 1 Corinthians 14, 27, just two verses. "If any man speak in a unknown tongue, let it be by two or at the most by three." He has a reason why he's doing what he's doing. Obviously, he is working to some kind of method or approach to keeping things from falling into chaos. And as I said, there must have been something happening at that church. There must have been. And, um, I, I, I've, I've been involved in, I've been involved, I've been in ministry, right, for all day and actually, it's been 24 years in constant ministry. And, uh, I've been through a lot, I've seen a lot. I've been through a split and schism in a church as well, I was out in, in South Wales. And I tell you one thing, it hurts, it hurts. And, uh, um, I could in a sense, right, write a letter based upon the experience. But Paul here has had most probably letters or reports that are going back to him and telling him what's going on in the church. And you know, I think that's right. People say, "Oh, I'm not gonna tell the leader what's going on. I don't wanna be a spy in the church." But I think on times, it's not about being a spy, it's about owning up. And it's about standing up for what's right and saying, "This is not acceptable." I think that's more like it. It's not about being trained by another and saying that. It's about being, it's like standing up and being counted and saying, "This is not acceptable." And we need to have that in the church. What's wrong with that? Are we all cowards, for goodness sake? I thought we belonged to the Lord at the end of the day and we should be standing for righteousness and for what's right. I honestly believe that. Our text of the prophets is speaking at a time when the structure of the church is young, in its early stages, and there is really a concern in Paul's heart. I, you know, when I, when I've looked at this and I've studied it, it's like I can feel that concern. I can feel it coming off the pages. And I think today that we are giving too much credence to young prophets. We're giving too much credence to them. There's too many ministries opening up their front platform and allowing some so-called prophet just to come up there and start speaking what he needs to say. And I think it's wrong. They're not tested. They're not tested, they're not proved. They're just coming up and doing what they want. And today with people that with itchy ears and they want to hear the word of the Lord all the time. Give me a word, oh, I do not have this all the time. Give me a word, prophet, oh, I'm coming up to you next week, oh, a word. They come up to you two weeks later, "Oh, I need a word, pray for me, I need a word, hallelujah, I need that word desperately." And they're like it all the time. And the church has become like it. Why can't you go seek God for yourself? You like that, wonderland? Go and seek him for yourself. I do. I do. I don't, I don't. Do you know, nobody prays for me. I'm in the closet all the time, me and my father. I talk to him all the time, I know, and nobody prays for me. I don't approach anyone for prayer. I haven't for years. And you know, I will not allow anyone to pray for me anyhow, unless I really know they're the Lord's person. You're not touching me. You're not touching me. You're not putting your hand on me, no way. You have to be careful. You have to be careful. The front is given open to too many young people who have not been proven, not tested, and, and they just stand there and say what they want. And I think then sometimes, right, you have to ask then yourself, I say this carefully, the maturity of the leader who let him stand up the front and allow him to speak things over his congregation without him discerning what's going on. We live in a crazy church time. You, when you think of it like that? Where the leader allows this young person just to come and stand and prophesy this and prophesy that and, "I have a word for this one, I have a word for that one." Have we even tested to see if that prophet is under witchcraft? Maybe the leader themselves is not moving in discernment nor the gift of the spirit, right? And he thinks that someone has got a gift. And the problem today is the church wants that gift. The church wants it and you're hungry for it and you want a word all the time, every five minutes. You're on the internet, pray for me, prophet. You're on someone else's, uh, uh, page, pray for me, prophet, this and that. You're so into someone's ministry and you think, "I'm gonna get all of this and get all of that because I'm connecting with a prophet." Shut up. Shut up and get a bit more mature with yourself. Get a bit more mature with yourself and start seeking God for yourself. Yes, it's right to be prayed for and yes, it's right to have a balance, you know, and say, "Prophet, pray for, I wanna be a genuine one." There's a balance. And today, the church is running forward like a bunch of mad sheep at the feet of false prophets. And then you have to ask yourself, "Why are our people demonized in the church? Because it's coming from the avenue." God knows what he's doing, but Satan also knows how to plant his people in the churches. He knows what he's doing. And there are false prophets all over the place. And one reason why the false is so prominent in a sense in, in why he is, is because the genuine prophet has stepped out. There's a void. There's an emptiness and in comes the enemy. Because the church has allowed it, the church has granted it, and we have become a powerless church. We should be ashamed. We should be ashamed. We have allowed the false to come in and we've allowed, in a sense, right, what we want to come in. You know, Paul the apostle mentioned about the itchy ear syndrome and that we want teachers after our ear. Shouldn't the teacher be standing in the front and, and in a sense, right, be within your ear, in a sense, with the correct doctrine? And you should be able, as a church and as a people, be able to take it in and to receive correction, rebuke, whatever it is from the pulpit according to the word of God. But we want it all so easy. We want the cross, we want the happiness, we want the money promised to you. We want the money, we want the prosperity message, we want the prosperity preachers and the prophets. My gosh, we need to get on our face and repent. We need to get on our face and repent and so do those. And some of those are gonna go to hell and they can take their collar with them. They are gonna go to hell because they will not repent from what they are doing. They are making a mockery of God's church. Well, that time is stopping. Judgment has come to the house of God and they are gonna feel the fire. They're gonna feel it. I've got a word tomorrow, praise the Lord, you know, it's still based on the, on the same text, but that word tomorrow's gonna possibly be a bit stronger than today. Are you happy? You still with me? I haven't lost you yet, do I? Half of you haven't walked out, it's like you're still there. I'm, I'm, thank you very much. I'm actually doing something, okay, if I do, man? You know, Paul said, let the prophet prophesy. So if we've got, if we've got, bless you brother. If we've got prophets in the house, and I'm just saying here, right? I'm just saying there. He's saying, let them prophesy. Well, they would have had the opportunity to prophesy, they would have had it. But today, we can say that today, let them prophesy, but I tell you one thing, I think ninety-nine point nine percent of everyone I know don't even come out the front and try it. Because me and Joanne, we're very seasoned and we know what we're doing. And God's given us a mandate and a commission on this church. And, and um, we, in today's day, right? We need to be very, very careful. Very careful today. And there's nothing wrong in you being careful. And if people are offended because you're too careful and you won't listen to what they have to say, let them be offended. Let them be offended. Because you are special, you know, each and every one of you, right? You're really special. Why should we sit down and allow the enemy to abuse you? Why should we sit down and have all false doctrine wash over you? Why should we sit down and have people prophesy over your life? When one, it could be false, two, it's of themselves, three, it's empty. And what if there is a witchcraft spirit in there bringing forth, forth, false prophecy? And because of how the church is today and they're hungry for prophecy all the time, you sit there and you say, thank you prophet for the word today, I receive it. Yeah, you received it, alright. Yeah, you received it, alright. You're more demonized than you were then. Yeah, you took it whole like in the second, you add a lot of it. You know the demons, they don't come by ones, they come in multitudes. They come in multitudes. And you know, Francois, we need to kick it out. Are you ready to kick it out? You've already seen some kicked out already here today, right? And I celebrate what's already happened. But this is a ministry, this is a church, it's not just a deliverance ministry. This is a church. We are pastoral, I'm also a pastor, we are pastoral. But when it happens in front of me, I'm, I'm becoming, one of these, I'm very, I'm quite on this. And I can, I can identify very, very quickly something, very quick. And with you, a lot of people would just said about you, you're just having a reaction to the Holy Ghost and, and unhappy, are you? No, that wasn't the Holy Ghost. Yeah, you were happy, but there was, there was a, a spirit there, right? That was resisting what God wanted to do. Well, there's more to be done, there is more to be done. But hallelujah for those that have already gone, amen? Amen? Let's, let's give praise for that. Let's give praise to those that have already gone. I want to say, hop in, sling her up, amen? Hop in and sling her up. I, I think that's a little bit out of context though, and then, but you get what I'm saying. Swing your, get out in the name of Jesus. So unity amongst the prophets, we have to have unity. If we are, if we are together, let's say there's just a group of prophets, right? There has to be a love and a unity between them. Because in disunity, the function of the prophet won't flow properly. There has to be like a unity, there could be three or four just sitting together, right? And, 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 yeah, they might go a bit separate, they might be sitting in a couple of other seats, but they should be together. They should be just sit together. And you know, I would even say that they should have fellowship together outside of the church. Go and have a coffee together. Go and have a meal together. Go and have a laugh over a good curry. I say, I like a good hot curry, I'm terrible for a good hot curry. Give me the chili, give me the bonnet chili, I love good food, Jamaican food, no, right? That's right on my street, right? But I think they should go, go and have a coffee together, go and have, go and have some food together. Have a laugh and have some fellowship together. So that when these prophets do come together, that there's something good between them. Something sweet. And they can sit down there and they can say to themselves, we're not here to be controlled by the church, we're here to be moved by the Spirit. We're here to be moved by the Spirit. And the message that we bring to the church is of the Spirit, nothing else. And to see that, that's a blessing. To see just a couple of prophets sitting there, they've got some unity and love between them, good understanding and you know they're friends. They have a friendship as well amongst them. That is sweet. That is really beautiful to see. I wanna see some more of that. This is important. The counsel of heaven must flow. Prophets who work together cannot compete. They cannot want dominance, to stand one above the other. I understand that there can be more of them, an advanced prophet. They say that. An advance, more advanced, more longer ministering in that area. And there has to be respect for that position, I get that. But to fight and squabble over who says what? Amen, so leave the church. Get out of the building because you're bringing disunity. And then what spirit have you brought? Leave. Leave, leave, come back next, next Sunday, get out of your bad mood, whatever it is you're in. And come back next week. Because unity amongst the prophets has to be there. I think the days of squabbling and this and that, it just has to leave. And we have to grow up in Jesus' name and bear the fruit of the Spirit, amen? Two, in, in 2 Kings 3:12, we sing King Jehoshaphat. I, I always get that pronunciation wrong. He recognizes a true prophet, which is Elisha. And he says that the word of the Lord is with him. And he says that in 2 Kings 3:12, he says that Jehoshaphat said, the word of the Lord is with him. So the king of Israel and Jehoshaphat, I am pronouncing that right, am I Pastor John?
Well, I'll let you carry on.
And the king of Eden went down to him. So going down to him, that would have been a prophet. But thi- this king Jehoshaphat, right? He recognized a true prophet. And he was willing to go down with him, he was willing to go and find that prophet. Instead of going with all of these false prophets, they're false prophets, most probably would have been very, very close by. But he said, no, I wanna go down and see him. Shouldn't we be the same? That we should say to ourselves, you know, all these big ministries, right? You should say to yourself, sorry, I don't wanna go to all of that. I've heard of a genuine person. They lived down this area. They might not be famous and wear all this gold jewelry that you are proclaiming. They don't drive around in these big four-by-fours which they've had the offerings of the people. They drive a simple car. But the glory of God is all over that life. I wanna go and see them. That's what I want, I wanna go and see them. That's what we need to do today. That king recognized a true prophet. And he said, the word of the Lord is with him. Isn't it right that we should, as a church, seek the word of the Lord but not something that is coming from many people? Do you know, it says, it says in one place, that many, that many prophets were all saying one thing. I can't remember if it's this, it's this one, or, no, it could be in the, in the message for tomorrow, but I'll mention it. The whole prophets all kind of saying one thing, I think, the four hundred prophets, right? They all got the same message, all got the same message, right? So the king brings out another person, he says, I don't like him very much. I don't like, he says, only if testifies against me. Oh, but you evil king, maybe, maybe you deserved it. He, and all the other prophets said, yes, yes, you know, we love you king, we're all for you, hallelujah! And all of this nonsense. And here comes this other prophet, he says, I fed him with bread and water and, and affliction, and up he comes, right? And he says to him, and he says, yeah, go, he said, and, and do, as in a sense, as all the other people say, right? And you know, the king recognized something. The king recognized, he said, he said, I enjoy, he says, that you tell me only the word of the Lord. He recognized, even a evil king, that something different was about that prophet. And he says, you're not gonna go and win that war. You're not gonna, this ain't gonna happen and that ain't gonna happen and everything's gonna go wrong. And it did. It did. But you know, he sent away that prophet, he sent him back to the prison. He said, go and, go and feed him with the bread and the affliction. What a way for a prophet to be, to be like a kind of, um, treated, amen? But I know one thing, I bet that prophet went back knowing this, that he had spoken the word of the Lord. He was right in his heart with God. He knew his office, he knew what he was doing and he mostly thought, well, the king, you go down and lose your life. I told you the word of the Lord. And this is the problem, that a church will not listen to the word of the Lord. They prefer to go out there and listen to all of this false nonsense. I am not interested in it. If God sent me to one of those churches, right, they would kick me out. Right? Because God would speak through my mouth. And I tell you one thing, right, it'd be like fire coming out to consume the chuff, amen? Amen? Oh, come on, amen? I get to consume the chuff, but there's a lot of chuff in the church. Hallelujah. Right, we need to go backwards and relearn. Jeremiah 6:16, right, says, "Thus saith the Lord, stand ye in the ways and seek and ask for the old paths. Where is the good way and walk therein, and you shall find rest for your souls," right? And you know their answer was? But they said, we will not walk therein. But Jeremiah just prophesied. He said, seek ye the old ways. Now, this is Israel, it's not go out of context. But today, we take the principle. And we take a little snippet of truth out of that, we pull it out and we say to ourselves, the church has gone too far in error. It's run after the error. It's run after it because it likes its tasty morsels. Now, we need to go backwards and seek the proper and the good way. You know, when the church was birthed, the book of Acts, we read it. I would prefer to go back to basics. See the church really edified and blessed and the power and the glory and the evidence of the miracles stand out for everyone to see. I prefer to sit in a wooden hut with no cellphone, under the glory of God and walk in the council of heaven and see the church grow multiple by multiple by multiple than get involved in that nonsense. We have to ask ourselves, what is worth it more? Is it worth it to walk in the council of heaven to learn the good and the correct way or to stay as you are? And we cannot stay as we are. If you want revival, you cannot stay as you are, you have to change. You have to relearn the correct things. Start getting stuff, this stuff out of your head and out of your heart, thinking you're this and you're that. Someone's come up to you and said, you've got this future ahead of you and this and that. And I tell you one thing, and if it was a witchcraft spirit speaking through a false prophet, yeah, you have got something coming your way and something will happen in years to come because you received it. You received it. The church is full of witchcraft and it's full of the spirit of false prophecy. The Lord will show up and reveal all things false and all things dark. And that is what we need. We need the church, the church upside down. We need to turn it upside down, the church, so that we can put it its right way up. We need to break something in order to fix it. And at the moment, right, the church needs sorting out. Are you willing to be broken? Are you willing for your phalaenogram to be broken? Are you willing to relearn and get this nonsense out of your head? Are you willing to learn and correct scriptural context and study and start to learn what it really says? Do you know, when you get into the word and you look at it in its correct way, its meaning, its depth, does it apply to you, does it not? I tell you one thing, this is like real bread. It's, you know, a lot of people, they look at the word and they grab it, claim it and say, I'm this and I'm all the other. And it's like dirty water to you. But you know, when you get into it and you're with an open heart and with a mind to learn, with a mind to learn and you say, Lord, I'm gonna look into your perfect law and I'm gonna take something from that that's really gonna bless me. You need one verse, but study that verse. Look at the verse, look at the verse, look at the verse, think about the verse. Look at the verse before it, look at the verse after it. Understand the context and who God has speak. I tell you one thing, it will bless your day. But today, we want the internet to feed us. We want social media and Instagram to feed us. We want, and you know, I've heard people, evangelites live on the streets and I'm saying all these scriptures on the streets, they don't even know what they're on about. Out of context scriptures. And I sit there sometimes and I watch some of these clips. I feel like saying something, I'm making a comment, but I don't. And I think what you're saying on the street is nonsense. You're spreading nonsense. They don't, the public aren't even aware of what you're saying. Why don't you go out there with a gospel and stop your nonsense? Anyhow, let's get off that nonsense and move on, amen? Lot of nonsense words in here. There needs to be a return to the solid prophets, not Old Testament prophet, not New Testament prophet, but a prophet of the Bible and of God under grace from Jesus Christ. We should not be calling a prophet an Old Testament prophet or a New Testament prophet. We're under the covenant, we're under the grace, we're under the redemption. We're under that kind of dispensation. But a true prophet that is called and, and, and is under all of that, right? Is something that God can use, a real vessel. We wanna be vessels of honor. Real vessels of honor. Something God can use for his glory. Something like a vessel that holds the oil. We want to be oil-filled, amen? Okay, so let, let's just carry on a bit, and I'm gonna bring this to a close shortly. The days are on us to reinstate the true prophet. And I believe that in this ministry, through what God is doing, that real prophets are going to rise up. Even with that lady, the Lord has called that lady. A call of a true prophet and of what the Lord has said. Thus saith the Lord, has come upon that lady. We're gonna talk, we need to talk again, alright? There are people in this church, right, that have come in and that the Lord has called them and spoken them into specific ministries. The Lord has given it to me also as a prophet, that when someone walks in, God can show me what ministry they have. God, I don't even meet anyone, it's like, I've never met you at all, I've never seen your lovely smile. But yet look what God has done for you today. He's not only spoken to you about an angle of ministry and that is gonna be glorious, but he's also delivered you twice there from some nasty spirits. God knows what he's doing. And we need to bring back the solid prophets. The prophets that were even to be feared. You know, there was a time, he says, they wouldn't even join them to the apostles. They feared the apostles, there was something about those apostles, hallelujah! Thank God for that scripture. And we need some more love back in the church, eh? I'm not gonna go sit next to him, there's too much glory on him. I'm not gonna go sit next to him, I'll be on the floor. Praise the name of Jesus. We need some more love back in the church, amen? Oh, come on, man, bring it on, amen? Hallelujah, bring it on. We need the real people, the men and the women of God, to stand in the position that God has given to them. But with that as well comes responsibility. With that comes accountability. And we have to take the responsibility very seriously. I know, I know that there is a, a very great awe of God in me for who God is. Those of you, I'm full of it, praise the Lord. Amen, Jesus? Father, I thank you. Give me more, Lord, amen? There has to be a real fear of God, the fear of God is missing out of the church. The fear of God. The repentance, the tears, the repentance that we should have in the churches and crying for our sin and the way we've treated God and the attitude we've had towards people and its ministers. We need to repent. If we can get to grips with that true thing of repentance and really rending our hearts and getting on our face before God, it's a start. It's a start. We need to have that. You know, we want to, uh, just mention, 2 Timothy 4:3 says, "For the time will come within lot into some doctrine," I think. When he said, "The time will come," I think that happened a number of generations ago, amen? We're just flowing with it still, the time has come, or we're right here right now, the time has come. It's in other churches, the time has come, it's on the corner, the time has come. Or it's down the road down there, the time has come. But not in this church. The time has come for difference. We need to put a line in the sand and say enough is enough. We need to move on, people, but we need to do it properly. We also see Ephesians 4:11, very important, every ministry. And he gave some apostles, some prophets and some evangelists, some pastors and teachers. Every one of those has a relevance and a significance to the body of Christ. Right? And we should have these in the churches. And you know, there's too many out there, right, they're doing their own thing. Oh, I've got my own ministry, I'm not in that church, I've got my own ministry. Shut up! With the greatest of respect, get your bum into that church because they might need your gift. They might need your gift. And today, okay, we can have a, a section of ministry or maybe God's given us something, but spend the main time in the church and in the body, being part of the body and not a limb that's out there doing your own thing. We need to come together. We need to come together. Ephesians 4:11 was not for an individual ministry. One over there, the pastor's up there, the evangelist down there. Oh, by the way, we can't find the prophet, he's on the other side of London. We should come together. There should be apostles and prophets and pastors all here right now so that each and every one of us can feed the body of Christ slightly different. You know, I usually call Ephesians 4:11 like a, like a, um, like a cake of different colors. Each section has got a different color. But each section, although it's part of the same cake, tastes slightly different. That cake should be sitting in the body of Christ. And at the right time, a piece is taken out to feed the church. That's what we mean. Matthew 24:11 says this, "And many false prophets shall arise and deceive many." Deceptive is in the church, deceiving. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there, I've got a little bit more, but I'm, I'm going to stop. I, I actually think I've given enough. And there's people here that need to be prayed for still. Am I normal with time? Alright. Alright. Well, I'm gonna, yeah, okay. Alright, I'm gonna say this then, right? Who, who are you who are coming tomorrow? Who's coming tomorrow? Oh, marvelous. You're, you're, you're a little bit reluctant there, eh? I saw that from him, he was like this. I know you can take a little ribbing, brother, don't bother you, we love you, right? I saw this little reluctant hand there, right? But, oh, so I'm gonna see you, I'm gonna hold you to that, right? I'm gonna hold you to that, man. So those of you who are, who are not going to be here tomorrow, I'm gonna give you an opportunity for prayer. So that we can pray for you quickly. And this is for those who are not coming tomorrow. If you're all coming tomorrow, because one of this, we're running out of time. And I, I, I expected this to go over anyhow. But if you're coming tomorrow, there's a lovely opportunity that we can pray for you tomorrow. Alright? If you're here and you're really desperate for prayer at the moment, I'll give room to you, alright? But if you're not coming tomorrow, if you're not, and I mean that, if you're not coming tomorrow, I'll give an opportunity to pray with you right now. But if you are, come tomorrow. Come tomorrow, there's gonna be a lot of ministry tomorrow, there's gonna be a lot of prayer tomorrow. God might get a hold of you again tomorrow, you never know. Freedom's coming your way, man, amen? Oh, hallelujah! Freedom, 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 amen? So whoever, whoever is not gonna come forward, alright, whatever, I'm gonna... Go on, do it. You're gonna pray, you're gonna do it.
If you wanted prayer?
Oh, okay.
All right, this is for those who are not coming tomorrow, and if you really need to, come on, come on, come on down. So we look forward to seeing everyone of you tomorrow, is that right?
Please don't rush off, I'm gonna give you something.
Yes, yeah, don't rush off, don't rush off. I'm not giving you my wallet if I'm not, okay? You're gonna be, you're gonna be disappointed.
Hallelujah, Lord, to God, church. So even as you're in your seats, and what we teach in this church is that when someone's up for prayer, you're in your seat, you're rooting for them, you're praying in your heart for them, you're believing God for them, yeah? So you're part of the ministry of Jesus, yeah? Amen, not just the ministry up there. Pray, pray, pray. Hallelujah, glory. Thank you, Lord, thank you.
Father, in the name of Jesus. Lord, we bless this woman, we bless this woman in the name of Christ. And we pray right now for protection, we pray right now, Lord, for a ministry of your Holy Spirit. We pray right now for the angels of heaven, the angels of God, to come into this lady's situation in the name of Jesus. Lord, the anointing. Lord, the anointing. The anointing, Lord, the anointing. Do not fear, saith the Lord. Yeah, do not fear. For I have overcome, saith the Lord. And although I see you in your weakness, I say you are not weak. You tell yourself, saith the Lord, these things, but you are not. You are a warrior in my sight. You are someone in whom I am using. You are a vessel in which I am sent in, saith the Lord. And I say unto you, my daughter, that the ministry of deliverance has come upon you. I say unto you right now, saith the Lord, you yourself need to be set free more, saith the Lord, before you try and set others free. I say unto you, that, yeah, by my power and by my spirit, I speak by my own word, saith the Lord, that the ministry of deliverance has come upon you. And the desire to get involved in this area will increase. And you will know, saith the Lord, that there are times that you will be able to pray for people, and there will be a manifestation immediately. And you will be able to recognize, saith the Lord, what it is. But I say unto you, saith the Lord, before that really picks up, saith the Lord, and before it really gathers pace, I say unto you, saith the Lord, there is a need, saith the Lord, of deliverance with yourself. There are things here, saith the Lord, that need to go. There are things, saith the Lord, that need to be extracted once and for all in order for you to feel free to receive more freedom and to get stronger in your body, saith the Lord. Indeed, saith the Lord, you are weak, but remember this, you are strong. You are mine, saith the Lord. And you do not allow the enemy to overcome you. You do not allow the enemy to speak to you. You do not allow it, but you close it down, saith the Lord. And you pray and you speak my word over your life in the right situation. But I say unto you, there is a calling on you. And the calling on you, saith the Lord, has begun. The calling on you, saith the Lord, was not many years ago. But the calling on you has now begun. And in the beginning of this calling, you will recognize a strength in my anointing. You will recognize a strength in my spirit. Yeah, saith the Lord, you will see, saith the Lord, for yourself, yeah, what I am doing because of my spirit and what I intend to do with you. But there is, saith the Lord, a need of deliverance. There is a need, saith the Lord, running away and saying to yourself, "It will be okay", is not the right way, saith the Lord. There is a need. There is a need, saith the Lord, and it's not just a matter that I desire to set you free, there is a need. There is a need, saith the Lord. Allow yourself to go into that place. Allow yourself to open up on the inside. Allow yourself, saith the Lord, to break forth into tears. Allow yourself, saith the Lord, that by my spirit, that I can minister to you because I will not go against your will, saith the Lord. It is time to choose, my daughter. Will you come after the way I am showing you? Will you come after the way I am showing you? Do not listen to a lot of other ministries. Do not listen to a lot of what they have to say. Because I speak to you, thus saith the Lord, this day. I have a calling on you. That calling is strong. I'm calling you into a different area. And I say unto you, saith the Lord, when they ordained you as a minister, they should not have done it. They should not have done what they've done, saith the Lord. For what they've done, saith the Lord, was outside of my counsel. I say unto you, there is a different calling on you and a different flow in what I am about to do. Yeah, indeed, you have seen much and gone through much. I will use your experience to help other people. But now, saith the Lord, is a time to let go. Let go. Let go of the pain, let go of the past, let go of that on the inside. And allow me to deliver and to make the journey. And based upon your freedom, on your freedom, based upon the freedom and the experience that you will go through, you will use that to the benefit of the glory. And you will see other people also set free, saith the Lord. Hallelujah. Well, friends, I think we're gonna leave it there for today, our leave for today. Amen? Father, we thank you that today, that Lord, we can gather in your name. Lord, it is a beautiful thing when brethren dwell together in unity because there you command the blessing. Lord, it is a beautiful thing that we, as the Lord's people, we are hungry for you. Oh, God, we are hungry and so hungry, we want to just have that more intimacy with yourself and walk in that intimacy. Lord, we just close this event just for the moment. This meeting will carry on tomorrow. The, the anointing and the glory will carry on tomorrow. And the word that will be given tomorrow, Lord, that itself is gonna be a little bit of a breathtaking. But Lord, we pray that you will minister to these people, thank you for them, Lord. Thank you for them for coming, for making the effort to come. Thank you, Lord God, that they come with a positive attitude, Lord. They, they come because they know that they're coming to a ministry where I, I pray that things are done right, and, and then, Lord God, that you are really outpouring your spirit. Lord, we thank you for the offering, for what they've done and given, we bless them for that. Let it be a love offering, and that, Lord God, that offering is just put to use in this ministry. Lord, we bless each and every one of them, we look forward to seeing them tomorrow in Jesus' name, and everyone say?
Amen!
Amen! Okay, those of you watching, God bless you, may they say goodbye to that, amen? Amen!
Amen!